Because a lot of people remember, but they do say.
Oh, here we go. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call Mr. Darby, who's joining us by phone tonight.
Thank you so much. All right, it's six o'clock hour. We're ready to begin our special finance committee agenda. We have a green belt transportation sales tax update presentation, and we are so appreciative that you all allowed us to defer this to today. Recognizing that we wanted to give you your full opportunity to present and not shortchange this very important presentation as time did not permit on Thursday. Thank you so much. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Going to run through our quarterly update, or our green belt update. It's not quite been quarterly lately, but for our program statistics, since the first round of awards in 2007, overall county council has awarded 229 separate green belt projects. And you can see we break those out below. I'm not going to read all of the breakouts, but if you see anything you have questions about, please just let me know. Total acres protected are over 26,000 acres with over half of those being conservation easements. And you'll see the breakout with minor improvements, corridors, and rural versus urban. And this has come at a cost to green belt of 166.4 million, with the bulk of that going towards fee simple acquisitions, the full interest in the property. At an average cost per acre, just under $6,000. And of course, the amount is higher for fee simple than conservation easements, and higher in the urban area. Match provided is almost 140% or just under 232 million. Most typical source of match for these applications are the applicants on financing, other grants, and seller donations of property value. We track public access acres. These do include acres from lands that PRC purchased as part of the first halfpenny, separate from the green belt program. So 12,641 acres or 45% of all green belt acres do have some current or planned public access. And total funding towards projects with public access is just under 180 million. Our minority lands funding is just under 60 million, which represents 41% of all funding. And minority lands acres, minority land acres at just under 3,900. Now we'll look at funding status. The lifetime projected balance is over on the left, and you'll see the breakdown for rural and urban first with a total of 163 million. And this is the projected remaining lifetime balance for both the first and second transportation sales tax. Current available funding before any action is taken tonight is over 13.3 million. You got a glimpse of this last week, but this is our urban breakdown. So the urban funds are then further divvied out between the municipalities and the unincorporated area. The urban unincorporated has been forward spent for some time now. That is negative 4.25 million. Folly Beach has also been negative since an award a few years ago. And then the other negatives, negative balances that you'll see there are a result of last cycle's award of the Red Top project, where that was funded through a prorata share of all allocations, including urban and rural. And this is the breakdown of projected balance for lifetime of the program for each of those urban allocations. Now we'll take a look at our goals. As you know, overall, we've exceeded the overall program acreage goal ahead of schedule. We've exceeded three of the subgoals as well. And we're getting close to exceeding several of the others. We've made good progress on those. One thing this shows is that we've developed a pretty strong conservation and green space base in the county. In fact, according to the State Conservation Bank and their modeling and mapping that they have done, over 49% of the landmass in Charleston County is either protected or being utilized for public green space. Over several GAB meetings, we have discussed revisiting these goals and potentially amending those. And after receiving some feedback from both staff and partners, the Green Belt Advisory Board did agree that this 49% base allows us to be a little more nuanced and targeted as we start looking at amending some of these goals. So they have been approved of this approach that we're currently taking towards revising goals, or at least making recommendations on those. We're in step one right now, developing a mapping geo database through geographic information systems, GIS. There's been a whole lot of new technology, models, studies that have been done since the first goals were set back in 2006. We want to take a look at those, pull those all into one database, and help those drive some recommendations toward goals so that the money's going towards our highest priority areas. This is something that's being done with other green space programs. The State Conservation Bank does this and updates their priority areas annually. Berkeley County and Dorchester County, who have new green belt programs, have also incorporated mapping into their decision-making when it comes to green belt projects. We're going to be in step one throughout most of the rest of the calendar year. And the reason for that is that we've got several parallel efforts that we want to include in this mapping analysis that are going on throughout the rest of this year. The county received a grant for a green infrastructure plan specific to Charleston County, and there's several departments here that are working together on that. Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission is conducting their own open space analysis plan for parks, county parks throughout the county. We want to incorporate that info. And BCD COG is updating their bike and pedestrian plan inventory, which will provide some additional data on those corridors we would like to include. So we do anticipate completing this geo database and making some recommendations from a technical advisory committee that we formed with our partners and GIS experts, and anticipate that will result in GAB making some recommendations around the end of this calendar year. Now we'll look at closed projects. You'll recall, last cycle, you approved 18 separate projects. So we've been pretty busy since then with project closings. We've closed 15 different projects since I last presented this information to you in May 2024. I highlighted the Red Top Park project because you'll recall, there was a special condition that that one closed prior to June 30th of this year, and that did recently close. So they've met that condition. These are the other few projects that didn't fit on the first slide. And we have 19 projects still currently pending, with 10 of those being different Mount Pleasant Way segments that were approved. And we're actually getting very close to the first one of those. And because those are different, we're kind of learning as we go, and I expect those closings will ramp up pretty quickly here in the near future. Next, I want to show you our program information dashboard that's found right on the front page of our website, greenbeltcharlestoncounty.org. This was launched back in February as part of an effort supported by county IT to increase green belt transparency, transparency and just general information for our stakeholders and the public. You're looking at screenshots here of that dashboard. There's a screenshot for each of those main tabs up at the top. This is the summary or homepage. But what you can't see on the screen grabs is you can manipulate this data. You can switch between charts and table views. There are links to projects that are currently open to the public, so you can find out where those are and what they offer. You're also able to sort and filter by a number of different, a number of different criteria, including city, council district, allocation source. This is our public access page, minority lands, and the small landowner program. So we're very excited and proud of that. Our application cycle, we're finishing up our FY25 winter application cycle with your consideration of those projects tonight. Our next one will open on June 2nd with applications due on July 25th. And one other note I would just like to make, because if you do want the presentation for each of the projects coming up next, just want to introduce Chris Dubuque. Chris, stand up real quick. Through our reorganization with Green Belt, Chris has been promoted to deputy director. So he's going to take on some of these responsibilities of presenting this information to you all. So that is it for the regular update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You want to take questions now, or do we want to wait until after the complete presentation?
So this is it for the first item on the agenda, just the regular update.
All right. So Councilman Vice Chair Kobrowski.
Well, thank you. I just have two quick questions. For anybody listening, what is the definition of rural and urban as you describe it in this?
Good question. That is based on the urban growth boundary.
Okay. So this, what side you're on, that's the definition you use?
Yes, sir.
The second question is with the definition of wetland, because the Supreme Court has recently changed that. And I wonder, because of, can we take a more expansive view in protecting what remaining wetlands we have? That, what definition are we using, or is it up to us to how we define that so we can be even more protective now, because we need to be?
It's really an estimate unless they, the applicant has actually gone out and sought a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps, which typically, you know, a lot of these projects they're not doing because it's largely for preservation. We asked for that information from the applicant. A lot of times, surveys will break it down between wetland acres and upland acres, but we try and confirm the information they've provided on the best information we have.
So are we able to define it ourselves if we want to be more expansive and protective of what, what lands mean for us for green belt? Is that up to us that we can come up with our own definition?
Not quite sure how to answer that, Mr. Kobrowski. We can certainly, you know, as far as this, part of this goals, revisiting these goals, we're going to be looking at wetland systems and connectivity. So I think we're moving in that direction with a focus on sustainable lands, but we're not quite there yet.
All right. So also, Mr. Davis, I've said this for five years, and I'll say it again tonight. As it relates to the bank itself, and when we look categorically or line item by line item per municipality, what municipalities, rural or urban, are allocated, for lack of a better word, sometimes those municipalities overspend in a cycle, and which then causes them to be negative, for lack of a better word. And so because the bank itself has a certain amount of money in it, although they have gone negative in their, in their allocation per cycle, it doesn't break the bank because the bank has other municipalities or areas that have not even realized their funding. And so certainly, you know, you're kind of, I wouldn't want to use the word robbing Peter to pay Paul, but at some point we need to better, I don't want to use the term manage, but we need to better educate, I guess, would be a term that I would use, municipalities when they are heading toward a negative situation because they may not know, or maybe they do know. The second thing I would also say again, just to reiterate the fact that if they are negative, then they're not eligible, in my opinion, you know, to apply now. You have to wait until you have money in order to make that application. I just, in a broad sense, would like to say that. And then, thirdly, when looking at those applications that come forward, particularly those rather matching whatever the case is, it always still must have a public benefit. And so if then we are awarding green belt funds for individuals to then block off that portion, and it doesn't have a public access, then what did we just do? You know, and so those remain just concerns that I would raise for the sake of the integrity of the bank and the program. Mr. Moody.
Thank you for those comments. I share your concern. If a municipality is seven or $20,000 under, they're going to get back over the next year. I'm fine with that. The rural, or I guess the urban unincorporated has got a huge deficit and could be even larger tonight.
That's right.
I think this council probably needs to consider doing something sooner rather than later about that, about that balance, but that's for another night. Mr. Davis, a couple of questions for you, more so about your procedure. We've got three, if I counted them right, three applications tonight. Some are pending, South Carolina Conservation Bank. Some are, we might apply. Some are, maybe we'll apply. There's one that's $100,000 of other unsecured funding. There's one that's got 25,000 low country land protection. So the more the merrier, because that's less money that we have to fund. But as a general rule, do we, are our projects' closings contingent on the approval and collection of those monies?
We certainly would not release our funds until they had those matching funds to bring to the table for closing.
Thank you.
So it could be a different source if they were not awarded a specific grant. Sometimes they will use their own funds.
Okay. I mean, my preference would be that this is already approved, and maybe they're waiting on us, and we're not out there leading and hoping everybody else comes through. Because once, if we approve something and it gets yanked back, as we've seen, it's hard to then yank ours back. So that would be my preference, but that's just me.
Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Davis, maybe one thing we could look at is, I realize there's a negative balance now, but you look at the projections for the, for that, for that bucket of money. Would it be prudent for us to reach a point where we put some guardrails up to say when that particular bucket of money, you know, is going to be negative to where it's a percentage of what's left? In other words, you know, when they reach 50% of all that's left to be projected, do they get cut off at that point so that we not, we're not going to have to pull funds from other, in other words, we're going to run the negative balance to a point where somebody in one of those other designations is going to have to cover the loss?
I agree that some policy on the forward spending is probably called for, and that is something that we tried to develop with the GAB during their last five-year plan review a couple of years ago and got to a certain point on it. However, they decided not to ultimately recommend that to council and to continue to take that on a case-by-case basis.
And it may be something that finance could weigh in on, but if you look at the projections, you know, they are just that, they're projections, but surely there's a percentage when they reach of what's left that maybe they got to pump the brakes until they get replenished. That's all.
And, you know, as it relates to council, you know, again, we did not have a transportation sales tax that passed, and therefore, these funds are more important now than ever. And I've said it privately, and I'll say it publicly, that we need to scrutinize these green belt projects more. And so whereas things were buried in yellow sheets previously, things were not explicitly explained, we need to, as council persons, do our own due diligence by digging in these green belt funding requests to make certain that when they come to council, barring what the advisory board has done, that we don't approve these things. And maybe that'll send a message to the advisory board until policies are in place, that if on their level, they don't handle certain types of things, that when it comes here, it's not going anywhere. And so we don't need to be a rubber stamp just because it comes up here.
Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Middleton. I'll second that and say, I'd be interested to see what the green belt had to say as far as developing something. With these boards and commissions, we appoint them to support us and to help us make educated decisions. And so if they've got some work in process, bring it forward. Let's look at it.
I would love to see that and hear that, and specifically, you know, since these are all the funds, right? Nothing else is coming because we don't have anything currently in place, you know, in perpetuity to replenish these funds. And I've said it before, and I'm saying it again, that we have to be better stewards. And therefore, from council's standpoint, I hope that we would be united on that, to say that some of these things that kind of flew through before will not fly through now. All right? We'll hear the presentation of the individual projects.
Mr. Dubuque? All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the FY25 winter cycle, and then we'll jump into each individual project. So this is the summary table you all received in advance for this cycle. There was a total of five applications submitted, two of those being rural, three of them being urban. Two of those are fee simple projects. One is a conservation easement, one minor improvement only project, and one corridor project. If all projects are approved, it would protect an additional 30.1 acres of green space and 10,853 linear feet of corridor. This is the overview map, just showing the general locations of these properties. We have the Botany Bay Expansion II project on Edisto Island, the Freeman Anderson Conservation Easement just outside the urban growth boundary on Johns Island. We have the Station 24 Boardwalk on Sullivan's Island, another segment of Mount Pleasant Way, and then the Coakley Chapel Park in the Hamlin Beach community. Here is the chart showing the financial implications of these projects. For the two rural projects, they total 635,700. If both are approved, that would leave us a balance of 8.2 million for the fiscal year. The town of Sullivan's Island is requesting 29,595, which is slightly more than the funds they have on hand. Again, that's due to the Red Top project that was funded last cycle. So if approved, that would leave a temporary negative balance of about 1,500 until that FY26 allocation kicks in in July. Town of Mount Pleasant is requesting 1,073,100 in their urban funds. Again, their current funds on hand are negative due to the Red Top project. So if approved, if further forward spending is approved, it would leave a temporary negative balance of about 1.1 million until that FY26 allocation, again, in July here, which is expected to be similar to the FY25 allocation of 1.38 million. So that would pull them out of the negative there in July. The Low Country Land Trust is applying for 1,614,500 for the Coakley Chapel Park. Again, this is a depleted allocation for urban unincorporated. So if approved for further forward spending, that would leave a negative balance of about 5.8 million, with just over 1 million in the lifetime of that allocation. The total rural and urban funds requested for this cycle is about 3.3 million, and if all are approved, would leave a balance of 9.6 million for this.
So may I stop you just here while we're watching this in real time? So you're saying that because we forward spent in Red Top, it broke the bank?
No, because of the prorata, so we pulled funds from each allocation on that last project to cover that. So it just...
To the extent that these funds, these funds would not be negative, but for, you're saying every time I hear you talk about these projects, you're saying because of the Red Top, they're now negative?
Those two, for the town of Sullivan's Island and town of Mount Pleasant, they would have been at zero rather than negative.
But they would have been at zero, meaning they still wouldn't have any money?
Until the...
I'm talking about right now, today.
Correct.
At the presentation.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions as far as this going, please? So as far as the projects go, our first one is the Botany Bay Expansion II, Ossala Creek Point project. The applicant is Edisto Island Open Land Trust. As the title suggests, this would be an expansion to the Botany Bay Heritage Preserve. All the land to the left of those two parcels you see is preserved, is part of the preserve currently. There is an existing trail system within that preserve that could easily connect to these properties. And there would also be the opportunity for water access on Ossala Creek there. This is a part reimbursement, part fee simple acquisition request. So the smaller parcel there you see, the applicant is calling the access lot. They have purchased that parcel, and they are seeking reimbursement for it. The larger lot, they are calling the peninsula lot. They are under contract to purchase that. They do have some significant title issues to work through on that, being Ayers' property, so that will take a little more time to close on. The land trust is requesting 570,000 in rural green belt funds. They have a 45% match equalling 255,000. Any other questions on this project?
Mr. Chairman, can we vote on them one at a time?
Yes, sir. Well, I would, I would say, let's go back two slides, please.
Sure.
Yeah, I would say we vote on this, because if projects come, and council, again, I just want you to hear me, we are for preserving the green space, but we're for preserving it when the funds are available. And when there's not a zero balance, there's not a forward spent balance, there's not a negative balance. And so then, if it's a '26 thing, bring it back in '26 when they've leveled back out. And so council, at some point, if we don't send a clear message, then we'll keep getting these over and over and over again. And I, some people say, well, oh, it's just two or three months. Well, then bring it back in two or three months. If you're saying that we can't close on some of these because of Ayers' property issues, just disputes, then why are we trying to make this decision today? It's not, it's not urgent to do it today. I would prefer seeing a balanced bank as opposed to us forward spending, and this is just me one, but you know, everybody else chime in, and then bring these things back when we have funds enough to move them forward. That's what I would like to vote on, because taking them one by one when all of them are forward spent or depleted or zeroed, we would just be doing the same thing.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. Are you saying that we would vote against just the urban fund project that are negative?
All of them. All of them that are urban or rural at this time.
It looks like only the urban ones.
Rural funds are available.
Thank you. So whichever ones, I can't, I can't really see the chart, even with bifocals.
I know.
Yeah. So call out the ones so that we can know, again, based on the list. So let's go to, go to 1B. Is that, is that forward spent or negative? Botany Bay Expansion.
Those rural funds are available.
Are available. Mount Pleasant Way.
Wait a minute. Well, I mean, I just want to go down the list first, and then we can come back. Mount Pleasant Way, forward spent. Forward spent.
So we circle 1C. St. Station 24 Boardwalk.
Partially.
You said partially?
$1,500 over.
$1,500.
Would be forced, 15, just by 15.
I got you. 1E Freeman Anderson Conservation Easement.
Those rural funds are available.
Available. Thank you so much. 1F Coakley Chapel Park Rural Green Belt Project.
Forward spent.
Forward spent. All right. So we'll take them one at a time, but I wanted to at least, you know, kind of bring that to our attention. 1B Botany Bay Expansion II. Move to approve.
Yeah, that's why we're going one by one.
One by one, yes. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Let's have the other presentation.
Okay, next up is the Mount Pleasant Way Rifle Range Road, Ben Sawyer to Venning. This is the 11th segment of Mount Pleasant Way. 10 others have been approved by council. This one runs from Ben Sawyer Boulevard along Rifle Range to Venning Road, and this would connect to three other approved segments of Mount Pleasant Way. As the other projects, the green belt funds would only be used to purchase recreation easement outside of the existing right-of-way from willing sellers only. Town's requesting 1,073,100 in the town's urban funds, with a 214% match going towards the design and plan improvements for the multi-use path. And again, this would require the use of funds from the FY26 allocation.
Mr. Chairman, so you're saying that this money is going to be used to acquire easement?
Yes, recreation easement outside of the right-of-way where needed.
But I thought we had already established this when they came one time before. They were going to use their money to buy the easement, and then use green belt funds for enhancement of the property. So now they come right back with the same thing all over again, active easement. So I'm going to recommend an aye on this one, Mr. Chairman, because, you know, I don't think we ought to be using green belt funds for easement purposes. I thought it was to preserve land, not, you know, cut down trees and all, because most of this stuff is going to require cutting down trees and putting down cement, right? Is that correct?
They would, as far as I understand, their design tactics would preserve grand trees and follow, you know, preservation tactic.
Put down sidewalks, so that's concrete.
Correct, yes. Around the grand trees, they might utilize different techniques.
All right.
And they're in the negative.
And in the negative.
That was, Mr. Pryor made that motion. Is there a second to that? Mr., after we get a second, we can have discussion. All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Werman?
Yeah, so, I mean, a couple of things, and I'll just respond to my colleague, Mr. Pryor, first. I mean, I do think, I think the distinction between, you know, asphalt or grass is, you know, maybe not always the most indicative. I think, you know, getting folks out on the bikes or walking around or whatever is certainly consistent, and... consistent, and I think a good thing to be doing with green belt money. That being said, I have got a couple of questions. I know that some concerns were raised about golf carts, which I'm not sure is quite as consistent. My understanding is that that is resolved, and that's basically illegal to use a golf cart on this path. Do we have someone who can speak to that here?
We do, yeah. We have James of the Town of Mount Pleasant here. Can you address that?
Yes, sir. James Aton with the Town of Mount Pleasant. Thank you, Chairman and committee members. Yes, so, so one of the questions that was brought forth as part of a number of different issues raised is, is the issue of golf carts. Yes, per state law, they are illegal to operate on bike and pedestrian facilities. We have information from our police department, in 2024, forty-one citations were issued for improper use, and thus far this year, fifteen citations have been issued for improper use. They are illegal. The Town of Mount Pleasant Police Department is enforcing, and will continue to enforce as these segments are completed.
Appreciate that. And I guess the, the other question I wanted to ask, you know, I understand the concern about forward-spent funds. What I don't want to do is lose, you know, there is a leveraging aspect of this, where, you know, we're able to sort of secure other funds from other sources. What happens if, I mean, is that something that's a risk here, particularly with this project, or really, I would ask that generally to any of the forward-spent projects? I don't want to lose an opportunity to leverage funds. I, I mean, I understand we need to rein it in, but, you know, we could have announced that before the application cycle. That's maybe to staff.
I believe the Mount Pleasant Way project has a federal grant or two that has been awarded, but I would again defer to James on whether or not you would be in jeopardy of losing that. Could you speak to that, James?
Yeah, so the, the town has been and is working through the final agreements of a USDOT Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, which allocated two point six million dollars to this section in particular. You know, obviously, this was one of the higher projects that came out of our safety action plan, and, and seeing as Charleston County is the fifth most dangerous county in the nation for most vulnerable road users, those being bicycles and pedestrians, this, this section absolutely floated to the top. We have Mamie Elementary School, which has over nine hundred students. We have the East Cooper Montessori Charter School, which has over four hundred students. So this is definitely one of the segments that floated to the top in our safety action plan, and USDOT thought that it merited award as well.
So that doesn't answer the question that you just asked. Would it jeopardize those funds if this were delayed until the twenty-sixth cycle?
The idea of, of the, of these funds is to seek approval for recreational easements in order to have those ready and available, and not delay our projects when we go through the design process. So it, yes, it could theoretically delay the implementation of these safety improvements.
I see what you're saying, but, yeah.
Mr. Pryor, and then Boo.
Just one, one question. So with all the Doge cuts and all that's going on in the federal government, most of these things are on hold right now, from what I understand, with transportation and all these other things, because other municipalities are scaling back, are stopping projects. So can someone answer that? Is this one of the projects? Have y'all been notified that this funding is, is frozen?
I think it's state.
This project is currently, like all grants, under re-review. We do feel a high level of confidence that, given the fact that this is a safety-related project and not underneath the general umbrella of what is being withheld and, and cut via these, these federal initiatives, that we are, you know, again, have a high level of confidence that we will move forward. Should these funds not be allocated, we do intend to utilize the Mount Pleasant Way Capital Improvement Funds to construct this section and other sections that were funded through that grant.
So again, I ask the question, what difference would it be if we waited until July?
Yeah, so if, if we look through all of the project segments that we're working on right now for Mount Pleasant Way that may require recreational easements, there are more than, than just this application now. So when we're talking about forward-spending funds, again, we're not looking at spending this money until fiscal year twenty-six, but there are other projects that are also included within this Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, that because of a delay by one cycle, we would be pushing those projects back and therefore delaying implementation of these, these, these improvements for bikes and pedestrians.
Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Chair, I would absolutely support your ending forward-spending in the green belt program. I would ask for one allowance, if I may. Could we not do it on this cycle, but make it in effect for the next cycle? In fairness to all these applicants that could not have foreseen our policy change?
Sure.
Mr. Kabrowski?
I just wanted to add that this is a road that I'm very familiar with. It's in my district, and I've been there, you know, driving down that probably thousands and thousands of times for forty-six years now, and I saw it go from a rural road where you had the beautiful canopy, almost from Coleman Boulevard all the way out to, you know, and it's, then all these subdivisions put on there in a very narrow road. It does make it a very non-user-friendly, so I see how this would transform something into people being able to use safely. There's several schools there, like you said, and it's been transformed, I think, in a very negative way. It was one where the, the infrastructure was not there, all the subdivisions came in, all the trees were cut down, a lot of them, and all the canopy was removed. My concern is the, how you define voluntary, what happens if they don't voluntarily do it? What happens then with building the Mount Pleasant Way? If we're only giving money for voluntary things, I think we came to a consensus, we only wanted to give money if it was voluntary. And what happens if they say no on their property?
Sure, and James Aton can address this if he wants to in more detail, but my understanding is they just would not widen the path in that area and be more of a standard, standard width.
Chris, that is, that is correct. So while the intent and overall arch and goal of the Mount Pleasant Way as a shared-use path is to have a minimum of ten feet, those are the federal requirements for such a classification, there are undoubtedly sections, whether it's environmental, whether it's settlement communities or other features, where we will not get ten feet, and it is not an all-or-nothing scenario. We will reduce that width to five-feet sidewalk as a minimum, and, and I'm sure, as you've seen out there, a lot of the current quality of the sidewalk is, is rather deteriorated and not being maintained by the DOT. So even with a reduction in width, we would be replacing those facilities with up-to-date, brand-new sidewalks at a minimum, and again, no impacts to grand trees, utilization of, of boardwalks like we have on the Mathis Ferry section, which has been previously approved to avoid root damage, a lot of different engineering techniques that go into that design process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say that I've been riding up and down Rifle Range Long Road longer than I care to admit, and, and yes, there are subdivisions now, there are more people there, there are schools there, but we still have a need for people to be safe walking along these roads, and there are a lot of schools there. A lot of planning is going into this. We've got a federal grant, or a state grant, I believe, to work on this. I'd like to see this move forward. I don't think it's fair to penalize Mount Pleasant, because our fund balance is, is empty because we used it somewhere else. Mount Pleasant didn't, didn't spend overspend.
It was zero before they got to this point.
Right.
So it was zero, so they still didn't have it.
But-
Point of information? Yes, we're going to go to Mr. Pryor, and then we'll come to you for your point of information. Mr. Pryor?
So the Four Mile community is going to be affected by this. Am I correct? Sir? Four Mile community is going to be affected.
Yes, sir, this is within the Four Mile community and a positive effect for improved mobility and safety.
And so getting calls from some of those folks, they are against this, and the reason they are against this is because they feel it's going to destroy the character of their community. But I, you know, they came here about a month or so ago and asked us to, I think it was Wayne Goway Lane to add another lane to move the traffic along. We told them no, but now some of these council members who've told them no, they're ready to uproot this community and says, okay, let's put sidewalks to these communities, and the people don't want it. Not saying Mount Pleasant, I'm just saying this council. We told them no, and, you know, and helping to move traffic. I think, was that Wayne Goway, Mr. Freeman? That road that you were asking to be expanded from one lane to two lane?
Are you talking about the highway you went?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yes, it's a, it's going continually four lanes. If it goes four lanes, then it goes down three lanes, which is insane.
And so we telling them no, but now we going to uproot their community, because these other communities came in after these settlements, the community was there, and it's to no fault it is they're being flooded and bombarded, with folks saying, well, we want safety. Well, these folks was asking for safety for a long time and never got it. Now all of a sudden, safety is important. You know, I'm for public safety all around, and I think nobody's fought no more for public safety than I have since I've been here, but I want to be fair. And so if it's going to, if the community said they didn't want it, why are we forcing this on the community?
Last point of clarification, well, two, two points, Mr. Boykin, and then Mr. Moody.
Am I correct that no green fund, no green belt funds may be used for condemnation?
That's correct. That's in the ordinance, sir.
All right, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm glad you brought up the finances tonight, because when the half-cent sales tax failed in November, I think that was one of my first thoughts, was that we have to get serious about this stuff. So I'm inclined to err on the side of financials. I will tell you, if this Mount Pleasant Way is used like the West Ashley Greenway, you're going to have a heck of an asset, a great asset. It goes through all neighborhoods, it goes through all income areas, it's a fantastic feature. Forty-one tickets, it will go up, because there's golf carts, there's motorcycles, all kinds of idiots out there. And, but I, I'm inclined to let this balance get back to positive, because it's got to be, it's got to be back. We've got to pull it in, you know, and I've wrestled with this. I mean, who are we to tell Mount Pleasant what to do with their money? Well, they've done too much. It hits the corridors bucket, which is a huge bucket we have problems filling.
Right.
So I think this is going to be a fantastic project when the money's there. So I'm, I'm going to vote to tap the brakes on this one for now.
Thank you so much. The motion on the floor is to deny the request, probably moved and seconded. All those, let's do a roll call vote.
So is the, a vote yes would be to deny it? Is that, I just want to make sure.
Yes. Mr. Boykin?
Nay.
Mr. Darby? I'll come back to you, Mr. Darby, Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
Mr. Wurman?
Nay.
Mr. Middle, you want me to get Mr. Darby first? Mr. Darby?
Yes?
Are you voting yes or no? The motion is to disapprove the Mount Pleasant Way section in Four Mile?
Yes, I think that's correct, and I was, uh-
That was Mr. Pryor's motion, yes, sir.
Yes, but it looks like I can probably hear him, yes, that's, that's my vote.
Yes, sir. Okay. So he votes aye?
Aye.
He voted aye. All right, the motion fails.
Motion to approve.
Four ayes, five nays.
Probably moved and seconded to approve. All those, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
Eyes have it. One D?
Wait, can I get who voted nay on that?
Middleton, Moody, Pryor, and Darby.
Okay.
One D?
Hey, next way, the Station Twenty Four Boardwalk. Town of Sullivan's Island is utilizing their funds to apply for boardwalk for public access to the beach. This segment would be replace an existing boardwalk that has been weathered and deteriorated over time. The new boardwalk would be raised and possibly extended in some areas due to flooding. You can see in that picture, there's just some plywood laid down in an area that floods frequently. They're requesting twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-five in their urban funds, with a thirteen hundred percent match towards the boardwalk. And Sullivan's Island has completed all of their other minor improvement projects that have been approved. Answering questions on this one?
So is this something that can just wait until July?
That would be in the middle of beach season. My beach constituents would-
I would-
Mr. Kabrowski?
I would say that another is also in my district in an area-
Oh, please forgive me, this is not, this is not overspent, so it's moot.
Hundred dollars.
Motion before we debate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To approve.
Probably moved and seconded. Okay, Mr. Kabrowski?
I would say that this is, you know, we all want access to the beach, and this is about the middle of the island, so when people come on the island, it's almost where they come on. It's near Dunleavy's, it's a, it's a central location, so it would help access to the beach, where everybody moves here to do. So I think it's crucial to do it now, and the town has spent a lot of money of their own, so it's not, we're asking, it's not that we're, they're asking for everything on this, and it would improve access for people to go to the beach this summer, which is what people want to do.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moody?
Um, I, I don't have any real problem with this, other than, tell me, the word construction is in the title of this project. Is there a carve-out for beach communities that lets them? And I know we've done it for Alapahoa and Sullivan's Island before, and the twenty-nine thousand doesn't bother me, but the word construction being in the title is, is a little bit opposite of what green belt does. Are they permitted to do this? Apparently they are, but-
They are. The beach communities are allowed to use their funds for minor improvement-only projects, typically minor improvements. If you want funds for that, they have to be part of a fee simple acquisition. However, that, the beach communities were allowed to do that, and the reasoning for that is that their funding's based on their population, which is very small, and land prices are very high out there. I believe this was something that was decided well before our time here, based on legal advice at the time.
Thank you.
All right, all, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? One E, this is not forward-spent. Freeman Anderson Conservation Easement, green belt.
Approved, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved and seconded. Let's hear the presentation a little bit more about the property.
Okay, the applicant is the Keywalk Conservancy. They're requesting funds to purchase a conservation easement on just over five acres off of Jenkins Freeman Road, which is off, which is off of Betsy Carison Parkway and adjacent to Bohica Creek. Primary focus of this project is to protect the natural resources of the property and create a wildlife corridor along Betsy Carison Parkway.
Who would have access to this when created? Would this be a public right-of-way?
So this, like fee simple projects, this doesn't have consistent public access. However, the owner, or the property owner, Mr. Anderson, has indicated the interest to have access by invitation only for individuals or groups for educational purposes.
So he can just arbitrarily, at any point, say no to individuals who wish to access the property?
That's correct. It'd be up to him.
Well, let's have, did we make, yeah, we've made a motion. Mr. Pryor?
So is there going to be a private dock built on this property?
The easement does allow for one dock, a couple nature observation platforms, and an open-air gazebo, but no other structure.
So a private dock for private people at taxpayers' expense?
Yeah, there's no-
Public won't have access to it, or whoever he allows to go in or go out. And so I've always been against spending taxpayers' dollars with no public access, and I will be the same on this one. But if, you know, I mean, for sixty-five thousand dollars, you know, this is something that could have been sold to these people just outright, but using the taxpayers' money where they won't have full access, I think it's an injustice to the taxpayers, especially putting up a, I'd say a private dock, because that's only private people going to be able to go there.
All right, Mr. Boykin?
And it's access to the water as well.
Mr. Boykin? Pryor, this is not a conveyance, this is not a sale of property.
I know.
It's an easement.
I know.
It is a cornerstone of the green belt program.
It is a cornerstone of the Green Belt program. It's in our, our documents. This is, this is what, what Green Belt does.
Mr. Davis, roughly, how much of that twenty-something thousand acres in Charleston County that were protected are done by conservation easements?
We had that number on the, on the earlier presentation, but well over half.
Finish, please.
The majority.
And, and on average, you know, is it like ten cents on the dollar would it cost the public to protect and conserve that property versus an outside, outright purchase?
Would you permit me to run back to that slide?
Thank you, please do, thank you. So, so he can't permit you to go back to the slide. You can ask the chair, and I can either, you know, say yes or no. Did he answer your question, Mr. Boykin?
He was gonna go to the slide to answer the question, Mr. Chair.
Would that be all right, Mr. Chair? So average cost per acre for conservation easements is one thousand seven sixty-two, and you can see the difference for fee simple. Total acres, you can see there, seventeen thousand, four hundred thirty-six for conservation easements.
All right, Mr. Moody?
I, I've always appreciated Mr. Pryor and Mr. Darby's sentiment, and Chairman Middleton as well, towards this. I take these on a case-by-case basis, and the, the match amount and the dollar amount are, are fine, acceptable to me. But I always, we, we talk about this often. It's a, it's a little bit of a contradiction, but given the, given the size of the match and the percentages, I'm, I'm gonna support this one.
All right, Mr. Pryor?
So, Mr. Davis, how much money have been spent on conservation easements without public access? How many millions of dollars? I think the last time was like eighteen, but you know, you can, do you have that figure?
I don't have conservation easements broken out, but I can tell you that most conservation easements do not provide just unfettered, open at all points in time, public access.
I understand that. My question is, how much was the money amount?
I'm not sure. I, I would have to look that up and get back to you, Mr. Pryor.
That would be fine on Tuesday. And, you know, Mr. Boykin, adding to what you said, these easements, I don't have a problem with these ones as long as the public have access. Okay, I know some of them you can't because the properties, you know, are contiguous. But when you're using taxpayers' dollars for, you know, people to stay on the land, and the public still doesn't have access, and, you know, to me, it's injustice to the program. Okay, we can say we served all, we saved all these land, and we conserve from being built on, but most of these people weren't gonna build on it anyway. But they got paid, not to build.
Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Pryor, this is all about trying to conserve green space. It's for resilience and sustainability. It's also to keep our sense of place and our quality of life here. What you're not, I, I don't think you understand, or I'll try to make this point. When a landowner does a conservation easement, they do a bargain sale of the development rights of that property. They are foregoing its full market value. Yes, they get to retain ownership and have the use and enjoyment of it. But it also means the public benefits from view sheds, less housing, less traffic, less cars. So there's a balance here. And so maybe it's not such a big deal in the urban areas, but it, it is how, how it is in the rural areas. So it's critical.
Ms. Honeycutt?
I, I just wanted to echo Mr. Boykin's comments, and, and I share the sentiment expressed by Mr. Moody. It really is a case-by-case basis. But from the broader perspective, this is part of our transportation sales tax program for the very reason that as we build the infrastructure, we are, on the other hand, protecting and preserving that quality of life, particularly outside the urban growth boundary, that makes us unique. And so it is a delicate balance, but when, when someone is willing to give away their development rights, there is value in that, and that value isn't just the dollar value, it's in the preservation of that pristine parcel. And if you look at this parcel on the GIS, it is a waterfront parcel that, that creates in that corridor that the conservancy is trying to protect along Betsy Carison, a very important piece of that. And so for that reason, I do support this, this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Werman?
Well, I, I, I won't rehash all the points that I think have been previously made. I will say, to the, to Mr. Pryor's point and, and Mr. Moody's point, I, I agree with that sentiment as well. I'm probably in the case-by-case basis camp as well, though, and, you know, I, I would like to know that stat. I'm willing to vote for this tonight with the understanding that by the time I get that statistic, I'll probably be on the winning side of that vote, and maybe we'll reconsider it. But my sense, given the history of the program, is that this is a little more typical of the program than maybe we're, we're realizing right now, that I think this is a little bit closer to the bread and butter of what we've done with this program for years. But if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and we'll find out, so.
Mr. Sass?
I would like to point out that this is a property that probably could be subdivided into at least two lots. That would mean two septic tanks and two docks. So there'd be, the natural beauty will be, and the view shed will be preserved, and nobody will ever be able to build there. Thank you.
All right, so... This is the final vote. The final vote is, let me have your attention, the final vote is tonight, so there's no more information coming that's gonna change your perspective. This is the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there is a procedure for a motion for reconsideration. So that's what I was referring to.
Just want to let you know that this is a vote unless we reconsider.
No, I'm, I'm aware.
Mr. Kabrowski?
We, it's Councilman Boykin in my district is most affected by these projects, and I do agree with what he said. This is a way to preserve wildlife habitat in our rural areas. It's the only way that we're gonna preserve a sense of place and keep things from being overdeveloped. So we have to look at it in that perspective. So I agree with you on that.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
No.
All right, one F?
This is one that is...
This is one that has been overspent, and so just wanted to point that out to council. Let's hear the presentation first, and then we'll receive a motion, if there is one.
Okay, so Low Country Land Trust is applying for Green Belt funds to purchase about six point five acres in the Hamlin Beach community. This is called the Coakley Chapel Park. This is located between Atlanta Drive and Hamlin Beach Road. Low Country Land Trust would retain ownership initially of this project through the first phase to help establish public access, complete some minor improvements and renovations to the chapel. And then they would then transfer the property to the Hamlin Beach Community Association to manage it as a passive park and community center.
So this could not happen in July?
I, I don't know the implications of the project. I'd have to defer to the applicant.
Mr. Chair? Just one, one point on, the applications are due in July, so they wouldn't actually make it to you according to our traditional winter/summer cycle schedule until early November.
Sure. Well, you know, again, during the cycle where they have a positive balance. That's the point. Mr. Moody?
Given, given the deficit, I, I've got, I like this project, I really do, but there's so many loose ends on this thing as far as fundraising and unintended, unsecured funding. The huge deficit I think we should take up before we deal with this. I would move to defer this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's properly moved and seconded. All those in favor for deferral of this project? Mr. Kabrowski?
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
I would, this, there's a lot of sense in what you're saying, but this is like a critical area that is subject to overdevelopment. It's the, you know, as anybody who drives north of Mount Pleasant, this is where the subdivisions end. It's a priceless piece of land. It's beautiful, and it's, I think we should take advantage of this to, to put this off from development when we have an opportunity. As we see landowners or developers trying to annex into Mount Pleasant, I, I don't want to miss an opportunity to preserve a unique and special place for the, the settlement communities, and I think it's a historic opportunity. I just don't want to jeopardize in any way. I want to seize the opportunity, and, and this is such a time.
So, Mr. Kabrowski, you're saying you would be willing to forward spend this in order to seize this opportunity?
I'm afraid of what could happen in the interim if people, developers have a chance annex as they're doing. I just, I, I think it...
Mr. Pryor, and then we're gonna come to Mr. Boykin.
Mr. Kabrowski makes a good point, too. So if we don't do this tonight, Mr. Davis, you said this comes back in July, or even if we pass this tonight, it won't come back to us till July?
No, no, it wouldn't. If, if we do, if we set them to the twenty-six budget, their application process starts again in July, so probably would not come back to us until November if it was a brand-new application. Mr. Moody has...
Can I maybe clarify?
Mr. Moody, if, if you would allow me to at least take a stab at clarification. For this particular application right now, Mr. Moody has then put a motion to defer it, which then means that's different than them making a brand-new application. This is something pending right now that's being deferred to a time that potentially could be July, or whatever date we say we want it to come back. And so they wouldn't have to start a brand-new application process. Mr. Moody?
I, I need some clarification. Thank you. You pretty much got it. But I, I would like us, as a council, to figure out this urban, unincorporated mess and how to fix it. And if we do that next week, then we bring it back in two weeks. If we do that next month, we bring it back in two months. I'm not saying to kick this thing to the curb.
No.
I just want to get the funding source better buttoned down.
Yes, sir. All right, so the motion is to defer. Mr. Boykin?
Briefly, I'd like to, again, renew my point of, of running these projects through this cycle and then implementing no forward spending for the next cycle. I just think it's unfair for these applicants that we, we start like a making a decision, we want to win, we won't to. But I just think out of, you know, courtesy, that this cycle not be impacted by that. But I told you, I will support you on no more forward spending on any of these accounts.
All right. All those in favor of deferring this item until a time that some of these other uncertainties have been worked out, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
How many nays? One, two, three, four?
So I think that's five, because Mr.... Mr. Darby, am I correct that you're voting against this motion to defer the Coakley Chapel Park?
Yes, I can barely hear, but Mr. Pryor knows his name, so I'm calling him in.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Pryor voted against that, so you're voting against as well. Yes, sir.
All right, properly moved and seconded. So that deferral motion failed. Properly moved and seconded, Mr. Moody?
Thank you. Can you explain the one hundred thousand dollar other unsecured funding that was in the grant application?
I've got Sam Sewell here with Low Country Land Trust, who's the applicant, so I will let him get into the details of those, of the matching funds.
Thank you, counsel. Sam Sewell, I'm the community lands director for Low Country Land Trust. So the hundred thousand dollars in other funding, that was, came at the recommendation of the Green Belt Advisory Board. So we adjusted the application to kind of increase the match. And so Low Country Land Trust will be working on securing that hundred thousand dollars prior to closing.
Can you tell me about the, the fundraising goal, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars?
So the two hundred...
Has that campaigned in the gun?
Yes, sir, the hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred, that's for planned improvements on the park, and so the hundred thousand makes that, brings that up to two hundred and eighty-seven. But the hundred eighty-seven, those were, those are planned improvements that are not covered under the minor improvements of the Green Belt. So those are based on estimates given to us by Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission for things like the pavilion, that's, that's planned on the property and other aspects like that.
Be the issue if that fundraising goal is not met. What happens then?
I mean, I'm not, I get, I suppose they would not be done, but I'm, I'm not sure how that would implicate y'all's aspect.
What's the timeframe for you to turn this property over to the neighborhood, the community association? What has to happen? What triggers have to happen?
So there's no official triggers, if you will, in terms of any legal things. I will say, we're regarding to the South Carolina Conservation Bank, the one, one, I guess, clause they put in their grant agreement is to provide their executive director kind of discretionary consent to approve the transfer of the park once they deem that the public access and improvements have been met. So I would say that could be also an additional, addition to the Green Belt grant agreement as well. But based on kind of our projects of similar nature that we do, I would say about a two to three-year timeline on the park development and...
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay for funding.
Yeah, nay. Thank you so much.
So what's your final vote, please?
Six-three, sounds like it.
So I've got, I'm sorry. I've got Mr. Moody, Mr. Middleton, and Mr. Sass voting against that item.
Because of the funding.
Sure.
And, counsel, I wish that we can have a gentlewoman and gentleman's agreement, because again, void a policy that has been created by our Green Belt Advisory Board to not bring these forward-spent things up, because it will not be, we'll do them case-by-case, and now that we have the sentiment, we can't keep making exceptions because, you know, they're in our districts, or we know, you know, applicants, or whatever the case is. Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Chair, can we just put this on our next committee meeting to address?
Yes.
And that way notice will be given.
Thank you so much. All right, so councilpersons, council, my council colleagues, we are gonna try this QR code tonight, and, and the ones who need help, I, I'm willing to come down and help you. And so please take out your phones at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna tell you what I like.
Please take out your phones at this time.
I think the public needs to know what we vote on in public, not on a, not on a iPhone, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, just like we do.
It's gonna come up.
Let me finish, please.
We will show it on the screen.
Yeah, but let me finish. I, I like my voice if you said aye, nay, yay.
And you will be able, so all this is doing is generating...
Mr. Chairman, it's moving us to the future like these folks in Columbia. They sit behind the desk, they hit a button, and the vote comes up.
It's this same, counsel, that took me two years to get us to even have Mr. Darby to be able to vote on the phone. And I, and I was backing you all the way, one hundred percent.
I'm just saying, take out your phone and pull out the QR code.
I'm gonna just say yes or no.
Well, help Mrs. Salisbury do the math quicker. It'll help Miss Salisbury do the math.
We're not voting on anything. We're just, we're just ranking our priorities.
But can I, can I say this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, we got, when I look at this, we got five categories, and we got like, what, four different items on some of the five. So can we maybe ask staff to, to come to ask for their, with five priorities that they like, and then we move from that?
We did not do that previous.
But what I'm saying is, I mean, they're closer to the ground than we are, and if we don't like what they recommend, then we can recommend. But if everybody's ready to recommend their five, their top three, I don't have a problem. But I'm just saying, I would like to get an input from this, the ranting them, because I think they're people on the ground.
They want input from us.
Why don't you give me what you like? If I don't like it, I'll tell you no.
I can bet for you on my...
So...
I'll put Mr. Pryor's in my face.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You get to say it out loud, and then I'll put it in my face.
Okay, we're, we're selecting now. Please take out your QR codes and, and choose your top three from the strategic goals that have already been approved in our Housing Our Future Plan.
I'm not seeing anything.
Please choose your top three housing, our future priorities. You would like for staff to focus their energy.
Are we doing two or three?
Three.
Yeah.
Make sure.
Thank you very much.
We can be able to debate it?
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. There you go.
Again, yes, sir, we're not voting on anything. We're just choosing our three.
Submitted two. Well, so I'm gonna put her name.
Okay.
Let me just put, um...
So we'll definitely pay, so we'll know who voted for what. And I want to get...
Do you just put four?
I feel like we've all learned something.
Pick four from all these?
Pick three.
Three from all these?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now you can be followed by cars, you're going by trivins. I know, I know, I know.
I can only imagine our escape room experience.
All right.
Pick three, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Would die in the escape room.
All right, so we have eight responses. Mr. Darby may be voting by phone, so we'll give it, give Ms. Salisbury a minute to consider his choices.
What do we, what do we, Ms. Salisbury?
Yes, sir, these are the Housing Our Future priorities.
It's not a vote. We're just putting our priorities, our top three priorities, in the queue so that we can...
Well, well, here's, here would, here would be my concern for me, because I'm very provincial, provincial in my thinking. Out of all the meaning that they have there, for me, this would come over three out of what, out of sixty-five, seventy, or eighty?
No, two, three.
It's five strategic goals.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
There are twenty-five.
Mr. Darby is my name.
Twenty-five, so I'm gonna come over top three out of twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Three out of five.
Man of my words.
I don't think that'd be fine. I just, I can't.
This is how we did it, this is how we did it before, the exact same way.
No, I never done this, but yeah, no, the police go as you're gonna go. I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not recording any votes for you then?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do you all remember this from the retreat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I can hardly see with bifocals. So, Ms. Worster, can you give us at least the top three that seem to be prominent at this time, just so we can hear?
We have two that have definitely reached the top.
What are the two?
Two B, which is collaborate with municipal partners to align the zoning and other land use regulations. And then another one that got five was five B, which is expand home repair resources for seniors and low income homeowners. Then we have two that have three.
Which two are those?
One B and three D.
So those are three D as in dog, or?
Three D as in dog and one B as in boy.
So we were in the same position the last time, and those were like ties, so we ended up with two big priorities. So we just kind of put that in information and leave it as that, right? So that's just information, and I think staff can glean from that what they wish. All right, thank you all so very much. At this time, we're going to go to item three A, the Air B and B, yes, Mr. Prior.
Mr. Chairman, considering the Air B and B settlement funding allocation, I would ask that this council delay, ask, not delay, but ask staff to come up with recommendations on how this money should be spent, but I also would ask that this money be moved into council contingency until we figure out what we're going to do with it. You know, right now, I think the money is sitting in ATAX?
ATAX.
Yeah, and so I would ask that it be transferred to council contingency until staff comes out with recommendations, not wants, but needs, and then this council decides on how we're going to spend this money, and we discuss it publicly so the public will know, you know, our top priorities.
And this is 9.6 million dollars?
9.6 million dollars, and I don't want to wait six months to do it, I think we need to do it as expeditiously as we can, but it's going to take us, I know, three readings to get the money moved. By that time, we should have figured out how this money, you know, I would like for them to, you know, give each council member a chance to make a presentation in public.
Yes, sir.
On how the money is going to be spent, and I'd also like to have them to send something out on how the $19 million from the Charleston Center, how it was allocated, so that way the public will know, and we will know as well, so it won't make it look like we trying to hide something.
All right, so let's deal with your, restate your motion for this particular-
My motion is to defer any action, you know, as far as the spending of the money, have staff come to us with top priorities, and then have the money move from, you know, ATAX to council contingency until we ready to make a decision.
Properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's do, well, yes, Mr. Boykin.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Prior.
Yes, sir.
This money cannot be used for any other purposes until there's a council action on it, correct?
No, no, this money doesn't have no strings attached to it, but if it's in the ATAX, you know, it could be used in the budget to balance the budgets from what I understand.
I'm just going to say, I want to make sure that that 9.6 million cannot be used by any council member.
Right, it has to come to council.
Yes, and it'll be, okay.
Yeah, that's my motion, it has to come to council, and then we decide where it goes. I'm just asking that the money be moved in the council contingency so it won't be, you know, spent out of ATAX or somewhere.
Mr. Moody.
Is there a, the money goes into ATAX, is that, if Air B and B was paying us as they should have been, that money would have been going into ATAX, correct?
Yes, sir.
So when there's a settlement, that's logically where it went.
From the accounting perspective, yes.
Is there a, are there any financial ramifications or balance sheet or any, I mean, should it stay, is there, is there an accounting reason? I assume it's unrestricted, which means it can go anywhere, but is there any accounting reason or budgeting reason that it should stay where it needs to stay, or stay where it, in ATAX?
That's a complicated question. I think allowing staff to come back with recommendations would be good. Mr. Prior, I would maybe suggest that it be added into the 26 budget in council's contingency rather than in the 25 budget for consideration. I think that might make it a little easier to, to deal with. You would also have to take in additional action to designate money and roll it forward from 25 to 26 if you, if you did it in 25.
Ms. Honeycutt?
I just want to make sure I understand, and maybe they will accept an amendment to this motion, but can we just direct that it not be spent at all, not a penny of it, if it sits in ATAX? I think part of our concern, or part of the concern raised, is it got deposited somewhere before council made a decision about how it would be spent, and, and so now there's this effort to try to move it so it can't be spent. Can we just, is there a mechanism by which we could state to staff, don't touch that 9.6 that's in the ATAX until we get this resolved and put it where we want it?
I believe so. We do not have plans to spend that money in the 26 budget, it's not included in that, so it could remain in local accommodations tax until council provides further direction.
Would it just be easier if we didn't move it? That way we don't have to change the budget and all those things before reading?
I defer to the attorney and ask her, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but let me defer to you the legal way to do this. Because it was unrestricted, that's what we were told by the lawyers that, you know, that litigated this case, and then you, you know, reiterated that as well. And so to me, you know, I just, you know, when people say, well, it would have went to ATAX anyway, well, it didn't because it wasn't collected in ATAX, so that's a moot point. The point is now, the money was deposited in the ATAX when it shouldn't have been.
From an accounting standpoint, though, is there any problem leaving it there undesigned until we adopt the budget in July 1st?
In an attempt not to answer this question without giving legal advice, because council has not taken any action and staff has done, taken action, I would suggest that you do make a decision with regards to where you want it to sit. I don't know the accounting rules well enough, but I am almost certain that it can sit where it currently has been deposited, but because you have not directed that, I would make a recommendation that you take some action to designate where it is. I do want to remind you that accommodations taxes does have restrictions, so even if it sits there, it may
Good point.
...cause unintended consequences. I'm trying to be-
That's, that makes sense.
Mr. Warman?
No, that was, that was a exclamation of, I get it, so that was not a hand raise, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I gesticulated on that one.
Yes, sir. All right, so Mr. Prior's motion is to cease the actions of spending this fund, these money, these dollars, 9.6 million dollars, and then to have staff come up with a list of recommendations of needs, particularly of priorities potentially that they would like to recommend relative to these funds, and then to move all 9.6 million dollars to council contingency. We'll have a roll call vote. Yes, Mr. Boykin?
Would you agree to amend your motion to put it in the 2026 council contingency as was recommended with Mr. Giles?
Legally, you know, is that going to cause a problem? Because I just don't want this money to be ATAX, and it can only be used for certain things.
No, it'd be council contingency, but it'd be in the 2026 council contingency versus fiscal year 25.
I like to see 25, in case we got some project we want to use, you know, before the budget cycle ends, we can use it in 2025. Well, I respect your asking that question, but emergency could come up, and the money is sitting in 2026, and now we stop.
Mr. Kabrowski?
This is a question, where it is now, as I understand it, can it only be used for the budget to reduce debt? I mean, I'd be in favor of keeping it, so we just did about affordable housing, and again, I think reducing taxes and using it only to reduce the budget, I'd be in favor of that, if that's the current status of it.
I'm not certain that you can even use those funds based on where they are to reduce taxes.
Then I would agree, then we should freeze it so until we decide that it not be spent anywhere.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warman?
Yeah, I guess my question on the 25, 26 issue is just, if it goes into 25, does it not, what happens to it when we roll over? If we don't spend it, it goes into 25, we presumably don't spend it. I mean, is it not just sitting there for 26, or what is the consequence that happens there?
It's a separate action, is what the administrator is saying. So when we get to, when we get to the 26 budget, we take another vote. All right, all roll call vote, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
The question is, the motion is to stop staff from spending the money right now, to direct staff to come up with a list of their priorities that they wish to petition council to use the money or allocate the funds, and to move all 9.6 million dollars to council contingency now.
And then not be spent.
And when we say now, as it relates to the readings that need to occur in the 25 budget.
And then it not be spent till we decide collectively?
Not be spent till council figures it out.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
He's going to be an aye.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Prior?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Darby, I'm marking you as voting along with Mr. Prior as an aye.
No, don't do that, that'll vote on its own, man.
Okay.
But he said that for every, everything else.
Yeah, tell him to say yes when everybody can hear his voice.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with nine ayes.
All right, Madam Attorney, item 3C.
Yes, sir, so there's a need for an executive session to discuss the ADIA regarding the Mark Clark Expressway.
And to the public, we do apologize for, again, this is still the special council committee meeting, and it's been, you know, a long one, but we came here to work. And so the attorney has outlined the need for the executive session. I have broadly said on the front end that, for transparency purposes, that if, as for me, I would not even go into an executive session unless it was absolutely necessary. This is one of those occasions where it is absolutely necessary to do so. The attorney, the administrator, and I have been working for months with the South Carolina DOT and with the South Carolina State Transportation Infrastructure Bank, and it is now time to make some very important decisions. And so in order to do that, council needs to be briefed so that they can have the information so that we might be able, as the 3C title indicates, unwind the Mark Clark Expressway contract. Do we have, do we have a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, we are in executive session. Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, how long do you think it would take to brief?
20 minutes.
20 minutes.[1354.91]
Wow.[155.91]
Anthony G. Bryant.
Yes, sir.
G is Gerard, not Gerald. I was born and raised Catholic. So, I'm not Gerard, I'm Gerald. But Senator Scott was under the pressure that he appointed Gerald. And so Brian Collet, who's his best friend, I heard from Stahl High School, I went to Norah Charleston. You know what I mean? I went to Norah Charleston, so I'm built a little different. And so Brian Collet over fugitives and expeditions. And so he would then handle, under the Constitution, of somebody being extradited for a crime. Well, I like innocence. Y'all got a forensic lab on rape and murder and whatever. I'm a good controversial. Well, what if you wrong about that? What if you wrong about that? What if you wrong about somebody raping a woman or beating his wife or whatever? What if you wrong about that? What happened to that person? In South Carolina, they'll get the electric chair, they'll get shot, they'll get lethal injection and whatever. Brian Sterling, I saw Attorney General Wilson at the Republican Party thing and my name, I told him, I said, "My name is Gerard, not Gerald." He'd have called Senator Scott up. I'm Catholic, not evangelical. You know what I mean? I don't go to his church. I don't know what he's talking about. He used to know me, but he don't know me now. But I'm built different. See, where you come, where I come from, you gotta stand tall wherever you do. You gotta name and claim whatever you do. You can't drop dime rat and be a clown. You gotta stand tall or fall. And if I didn't do anything, I ain't heard about it. But if I did something, I stand tall to it, even if it's a death penalty. That's what I believe in as a black man in this state. You're doomed to be hung or you're doomed to get a BA degree, an MBA, a PhD and be Kalan Middleton. It's your choice. Thank you very much.
George Freeman, Colley Farah, Bill Young.
Good evening, George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road. There were a few more people here earlier, but those who came against the Mount Pleasant Way, can I please get you to stand and let them know there are people who came out tonight who are against this Mount Pleasant Way in Mount Pleasant. Some of them have already left since you went into executive session, but a few of us that came. Thank you. I'm very disappointed with council. This is not, there's nothing safety about this Mount Pleasant Way. You're talking about disrupting the community to allow other people to ride electric bikes. I know you say that golf carts are illegal, but at any time, a council couldn't approve those things to be legal to run through the community. There will be electric bikes coming through our neighborhood. They have already said that they will allow electric bikes on this path. You cannot stop people with ATVs from riding those things once it's built. Because it will be enforced by the police to stop people from riding their golf carts, people do it right now. But I would like to get back to the money. I've heard the word preservation. I served on the Green Belt Advisory Board. The whole purpose for the Green Belt is preserving property. You are talking about, this is the town of Mount Pleasant money. This is the taxpayers' money. And the taxpayers voted to preserve property, not to spend money to come into people's neighborhood and destroy green space and trees. I know that the town comes up with all kinds of lies and excuses about how they're going to protect this and that. But it's insane to say that you're going to have a narrow strip of property, then you're gonna go to 10 to 12 feet, have a narrow strip of property, then go to 10 to 12 feet. Somebody who is authorized, any vehicle authorized to ride on this thing will not stop when they get to the small feet. Again, Green Belt is preserving the communities in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Colley Farah, Bill Young, Kaylee Hastings.
Good evening, Colley Farah with the Kiowa Conservancy. And thank you for the committee's recommendation. Thank you for council considering the Freeman Anderson Conservation Easement this evening. It's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Anderson, who's here tonight. I want to first thank council and for the Green Belt program. If it wasn't for the program, a lot of conservation wouldn't be possible. Mr. Anderson came to us with a dream to see his family land conserved in perpetuity. He's been willing to give up almost every right to that land because that's what he wants to do. He wants to see it preserved and protected, never built upon. He wants to make that decision today for his future generations later on. But it will have a lot of great public benefit. It will preserve the wildlife that we all come here to enjoy. He's got a dream to allow for schoolchildren and others to be able to come to the land and learn about it. He's been designing a website that will have interactive features for people to connect with the land, and that process has already begun. Furthermore, the goal of this project was to create a milestone for conservation. There is a lot of small parcels on John's Island, but that doesn't mean they're not worth conserving. We see this as an opportunity to show that all land is important to conserve, but also achievable. It's just been a wonderful process, and I can't wait for y'all to hear from Mr. Anderson as well. Thank you.
Bill Young, Kaylee Hastings, Louise Anderson.
Good evening. Bill Young, 1309 Tarmigan.
Thank you so much. I was gonna ask you to state your address.
Absolutely. The theme of my comments tonight is common ground. Councilman Werman, I too share your sentiments for finding compromise. Councilmember Pryor, I love the Braves, almost a 500. Chairman Middleton, I'm a Christian and I love Jesus. And Councilmember Kibrovsky, I support freedom of religion. Now, why I'm here tonight is because recently I saw our current congressional representative, Nancy Mace, make a post about the Charleston County Library Board, posting books in the front of "I'm a Drag Queen and You Know It," right in front where kids can see it. Now, I wasn't gonna waste our time here today. I was gonna go to the library board, handle it the lowest level possible. Unfortunately, it's been communicated that there are threats coming from the library board.
We're the Dick Rolls of the Charleston County Library. And he, former judge, big note for that, served in the National Guard, I think, for over 30 years, took the oath a couple times with that. Are you aware that he said the next time that someone calls him a radical or a patriot, they better have a gun in their hand because they're not gonna like what's gonna happen next? Are you aware that Dick Rolls of the Charleston County Library? And he, former judge, big note for that, served in the...
Now, that was brought to the State Senate floor by Democrat Ed Sutton. I would like to go to the Charleston County Library Board, but as a Marine veteran who was taught to disarm individuals, I'm afraid I'm gonna get into a confrontation where I might have to disarm someone or restrain someone who's unhinged, who's a public official, over individuals communicating their right. So today, I'm here to ask for compromise. Common ground. I'm asking someone here to make a motion. Have them move and give them counsel that this is wrong. Thank you.
Kaylee Hastings, Louise Anderson, Katie Zimmerman.
That was a great segue. The only unhinged person on the library board is Graham Horstman. I went to the library board meeting last week for the first time because I'd heard about the whole oath debate. To be clear, I don't care whether the board members, government workers, whoever swore an oath. That entire debacle is a huge waste of time and public resources. After attending last week's library board meeting, that makes sense because Graham Horstman's entire shtick is maliciously wasting time and resources. As a Charleston County citizen and dedicated library patron, it was unbelievably frustrating to witness. If someone isn't good at their job, you fire them. Graham Horstman is a volunteer, and he is terrible at his job. He's actually actively making everyone else's job more difficult. It is unacceptable for you, county council, to waste my tax dollars on his disruptions. My understanding is that Graham Horstman was initially appointed against the library's recommendation, and then last month, four very dedicated and experienced public servants on the library board called for his removal. I've not found any record of a response from you all. At what point will he be removed? How much money and time and resources does this man have to waste before you acknowledge your mistake in supporting him? This isn't about taking an oath, and this isn't about politics. We have one of the best library systems in the country. The programming, the facilities and the staff are unmatched, and they deserve the support of a dedicated supportive Board of Trustees. Graham Horstman is not supportive of anything to do with the library. He's not doing the job to which he was appointed. I want him to remove from the library board, and I want the library administration to submit a candidate for his replacement because you guys have lost my... You've lost my confidence in being able to choose anyone. He's wasting time, both mine, all of ours, the libraries. He's wasting all of our tax dollars, and he's wasting valuable library resources. You need to remove him immediately. You should all request the audio file from the library board meeting last week. It is absurd to listen to. You should be embarrassed that you're supporting this man. It is horrible.
Louise Anderson, Katie Zimmerman, Cassandra Davis.
Good evening, members of the county council and those who are in attendance. I'd like to ask for a procedural change. I want to limit my comments, but I'd like to also give a couple of minutes.
No, sir. Only person to have signed up.
Because it's relevant.
That's right.
I'm fine. That's why I asked permission.
Yes, sir.
Anyway...
Please give your name and your address.
I plan to. Yeah, I'm Louis Anderson. I'm the owner of the property that's being reviewed. I sent all of the council members a copy of my family's history. This has been a lifelong dream of mine, and it's an extension of, I believe, what my family wish and what they want. Members of my family, they were here, but they had to leave. Members of the team includes Colley. He basically kind of helped me form my idea. And then Attorney Kelly helped with the legal elements of it. I want to comment on the whole notion that seems to be in question, that is, public accessibility. I was never one that says no to it. I'm not sure how that was characterized or mischaracterized. The goal of that was to have public accessibility, but in limited, vetted form. Moreover, if you take a look at the easement, it does talk about passive accessibility in terms of camping, fishing, but all of that should be vetted, in part because it's a balance. We want to maintain the pristine, as Councilman Honeycutte suggested, the pristine value of the property, which is very, very important. I am carrying on a legacy that legacy started with my family. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Katie Zimmerman, Cassandra Davis, Lou Esther Manigold.
Hi, I'm Katie Zimmerman, Executive Director of Charleston Moves. Thank you all for your recommendation from the Finance Committee for the Green Belt project from Mount Pleasant Way. I appreciate that. Just, y'all know this, I feel like every time I get up here, I say, "Y'all know this." But the Green Belt, you know, the focus of the Green Belt is sort of that hub and spokes model. And the performance metric that has not been doing well under the Green Belt program for the past decade or so is the connectivity portion. People need to be able to access these green spaces, not just by car, but by cleaner modes. But people, as Mr. Aton pointed out, also need to access their daily needs, so schools, businesses, neighborhoods, all of those important things. And it was, the conversations that happen with every segment of Mount Pleasant Way are very similar to the same conversation y'all had, and then a few of us walked it for the Central Park and Riverland project, where there were individual property owners who were very concerned about the width of the path proposed. So y'all settled on, okay, there are certain portions where we're just gonna clean up the sidewalk and leave it alone. And neighbors, those individual neighbors, were very pleased with that approach, and this is very similar. I've attended almost all of the community meetings for each segment, and that's how it goes. The, you know, each individual property owner gets to weigh in on what the width of this path is gonna look like. And finally, I just want to make it very clear, I had conversations with a few of you, but the golf cart situation on paths countywide is starting to make me insane. It's incredibly dangerous to have golf carts on these paths. It's illegal. They shouldn't be there. These paths aren't wide enough. A path to accommodate a golf cart should be at least 16 feet wide. We don't have that. So this is an ongoing issue that I'm glad...
Cassandra Davis, Lou Esther Manigold, Courtney Naper.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassandra Davis, and my address is 1148 Huora Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And I am here in support of the Hamlin Beach community, our community, getting our... I am so nervous. I'm so excited. Our Coakley Chapel Park up and running. I just want to thank everybody on the council who supported, and even those of you who have questions, I promise you, we will make you guys proud. We'll keep you abreast of everything that's going on, even if we don't come back to here to give you the updates. We will make sure you all have updates along the way. And we definitely invite you to come out and see the property whenever you get an opportunity. Thank you all.
Lou Esther Manigold, Courtney Naper, Eden Lieberman.
Good evening. My name is Lou Esther Manigold. I live on 2755 Atlanta Drive in the Gullaguchi community of Hamlin Beach. I will read for your hearing Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinance, Chapter 51.092, letter A, C, and D. Contiguous properties annexation into the town is required as a condition prior to Mount Pleasant Town Water Works, providing sanitary sewer to any lot, parcel, or piece of land located outside the corporate limits of the town and contiguous to the town limits. C states non-contiguous properties except as permitted under Division D below. Sanitary sewer service may be provided by the Mount Pleasant Water Works to non-contiguous properties located outside of the corporate limits of the town and within the town's official planning area, providing that the owners of the same execute a binding legal document acceptable to the town, requiring the owners and their heirs, successors, and signs to annex the subject properties into the town within 90 days of the same becoming contiguous to the town. The referenced legal document shall be approved by the town attorney and recorded by the owners in the Register Mesny Conveyor's Office for Charleston County. D states any lot, piece, or parcel of land located outside the corporate limits of the town, whether contiguous or non-contiguous, and within the town's official planning area that contains an existing residential structure serviced by a septic system as of June 14, 2022, may obtain sanitary sewer service for Mount Pleasant Town Water Works without following the following requirements of that section, provided, however, that such lot, piece, or parcel of land shall be allocated and permanently limited to one residential Any such lot, piece, or parcel of land requiring more than one REU per existing residential structure by Mount Pleasant Water Works shall be required to follow the requirements of Divisions A to C of this section. This exception contained in Division D of this section notwithstanding. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Courtney Naper, Eden Lieberman, Max Sorgenfry.
I'm Courtney Naper, 2345 King Edward Drive. I'm here to speak further in support of the removal of Graham Horstman from the Charleston County Library Board of Trustees. He argues exclusively in bad faith. He behaves childishly. He derails meetings at every move. He asks irrelevant questions. He poses motions that are not relevant to the meeting at hand, then denies the own motions that he proposes purely to waste several minutes of every meeting for every section of every meeting. Again, the urge for y'all to listen to that audio file for this most recent meeting, I agree with. It's pathetic. He's kind of acting like a bumbling fool up there, and I'm embarrassed that he is acting on y'all's behalf because I also know that the library admin did not like his application for volunteering and that it was exclusively y'all's act that did get him in there. And he is exclusively trying to defund the board. He has made moves to remove several members of the board, and he has no good faith in him to serve our communities or our libraries. He is only here to disrupt and distract and to defund our libraries and put our communities in harm's way and de-educate those who don't agree with his extremist agendas. He was Senator Matt Lieber's campaign manager, and Michelle Lieber, Matt Lieber's wife, is actively trying to sue the library board alleging they're disseminating pornography to minors, which is just a slanderous lie. It is also known that Graham Horstman is affiliated with Moms for Liberty, much the same as Michelle Lieber. And it's pretty easy to see he's trying to empty out the board so it can be packed with Moms for Liberty to further their extremist agenda, to censor books and defund these public programs, and remove $1.5 million that has already been voted and allocated on to go to the main library branch downtown, the only local branch yet to receive renovations. So it's, if you're looking for fraud...
Eden Lieberman, Max Sorgenfry, Eva Dawson.
Good evening. My name is Eden Lieberman. I come to you as a conservative citizen of Charleston County. I'm a voter and I'm a taxpayer. I'm here to speak in support of the removal of Graham Horstman from the Board of Trustees for the Charleston County Public Library. Since his appointment in January, Graham Horstman has brought nothing but chaos, disruption, and ideological warfare to the board. He has shown nothing but contempt for his duties entrusted to him, repeatedly derailing meetings and obstructing the work that the board is supposed to do for the public good. He is a political agitator, and he is a, he is an agent of a political machine that includes far-right agitators like Senator Matt Lieber and his wife, and extremist organizations like Moms for Liberty. These institutions ban books, suppress inclusive education, and impose authoritarian control over what our communities are allowed to read, learn, and say. When Mr. Horstman tried to overturn the ban of an individual who threatened the safety of library staff, he showed exactly where his loyalties lie, not with public servants, not with Charleston County residents, but with dangerous, but with the dangerous ideological playbook crafted by people like Matt Lieber and championed by Moms for Liberty. Has pushed to insert himself in the hiring and firing decisions, something no library board in this state has the power to do, is nothing more than an attempt to install political loyalists and carry out purges. This is textbook authoritarianism. We've seen it before. In 1930s Germany, Reich officials purged libraries of so-called anti-state materials, banning and burning books that didn't fit their political agenda. Mr. Horstman's efforts are no different in spirit. He is not here to serve. He is here to control, disrupt, and censor. Charleston County deserves better. We demand Graham Horstman's immediate removal, and I, along with many others, eagerly await the day he submits his resignation to the board. I yield the rest of my time.
Max Sorgenfry, Eva Dawson, Richard Haversham.
Hi, my name is Max Sorgenfry. I served for six years in the Navy. I operated a nuclear reactor on a submarine. I'd like to start with the oath to integrity that I said every day at nuke school. Absolute honesty, trustworthiness, and reliability in nuclear power plant training, operations, certification, and maintenance. Having the moral courage to accept responsibility for one's actions, placing the needs of the nation and Navy ahead of loyalty to individuals. And I am here to speak in support of library board member Graham Horstman's removal from the Charleston County Public Library School Board. I cannot help but transport myself back to my submarine and imagine myself standing watch with someone like him behaving how he's behaving in the presence of a nuclear arsenal, in the presence of a nuclear reactor, and the dread that it fills me with to be subjected to that type of behavior in a sensitive environment. It's clear that the threat he would hypothetically pose to my submarine's ability to carry out its mission is the very real threat that he poses to the library's ability to carry out its mission. And my commitment to my personal integrity also extends to my belief in the integrity of public institutions, and the threat that he is posing to the intellectual integrity and freedom of the public institution of the library demands his immediate removal and censorship. And I, along with my friends, are looking forward to the day that he is forced to resign or removed from the board because I do not believe that his actions serve the needs of the community or library, but it is clear that his actions serve to the loyalty of his, to the loyalty of individuals. And based off of my interpretation of integrity, I may have stopped saying those words every day 13 years ago, but I've never stopped living by them. Graham Horstman does not live by them, and he must be removed from service.
Eva Dawson, Richard Haversham, Myra Richardson.
Good evening. I'm Eva Dawson. I reside at 2031 Green Hawk Avenue, Charleston, SC 29414. Greetings, Chairman Middleton and other council members. I'm here to hopefully receive clarification on a confusing-to-me issue. Posted on the county's websites and doors of specific county offices are opening, beginning, and closing times, specifically 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. However, on Friday, December 6, 2024, I telephoned the county's voter registration office at 4:10 p.m. I telephoned four consecutive times. No answer. Receiving no answer, I chose to drive there because I needed a document pertinent to a business matter. No one was at the lobby's desk. Three persons came out of a dark conference room, 4:10 p.m. One came to the desk. This employee proceeded to fulfill my request, however, attempting to charge me for a printed copy of a document I requested. I was told I needed to go to a website to request the document. This is the evidence of the website he wrote it on. I decided to go back to the said office on Monday morning. A female employee fulfilled my request. No fees on website was mentioned. I received my document. Several days later, I went to the county's vital statistics record office in an attempt to obtain another document. It was approximately 4:15 p.m., and I was told I needed to be there by 4:00 p.m. because it may take a long time to locate my document. Serve constituents after 4:00 p.m. before 5:00, when operating time is posted as 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thanks for helping me understand how my tax dollars are being utilized. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dawson. Certainly, that is concerning, and I will follow up on that. And Ms. Dawson, may we have a copy, maybe not the original, of the pad that the person wrote down the website? Can we get a copy of that? If you would see the clerk, and she can give you the original back. Thank you, Mr. Haversham.
Okay. My name is Richard Haversham, 2938 Bennett Charles Road. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Sasse and Ms. Pigott for coming to our meeting this past Monday and updating us on the Highway 41 project, which we really want to, you know, be completed so we can get it, you know, so the county can get it done. But tonight, I'm gonna talk about housing. You know, lately, we was talking about a lot of affordable and attainable housing, but nobody is talking about low-income housing. You know, in Mount Pleasant area, affordable housing is $400,000, and attainable house is $300,000. A household have to make at least $80,000 just to qualify for attainable house. Most communities, you know, most settlement community just can't afford that. When a developer buys property in our neighborhood, they don't build low-income houses. They build houses from $800,000 and up, unaffordable for our community. We like the county to help with this problem. You know, since we got these acreage for sale, the county can help buy the acreage and partnership up with some of these nonprofit to help build these, build some low-income housing. This help bring down the price, and it'll help the household that don't make $80,000 could afford a home in our neighborhood. The Phillips community is willing to have four lots, four lot, 10,000 square foot lot per acre for low-income, low-income housing. You know, right now, it's three lots, 12,000 square foot per lot. This will help the resident in the areas, in the Phillips community, to stay in the community and buy homes there. And this is not just a Philip problem. If the county is willing, this will help solve two problems. It helps solve housing and it'll help the community character intact. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Myra Richardson is our last speaker.
Good day. My name is Myra Richardson, 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I would like to read about Ordinance 2078, an ordinance prohibiting annexation as a pre...
I would like to read about ordinance 2078, an ordinance prohibiting annexation as a prerequisite for obtaining sewer service in an unincorporated area of Charleston County. Mount Pleasant ordinance states that you are required to ask to annex into Mount Pleasant. I know and I appreciate your opposing the annexation of 2790 Hamlin Beach Road, but last week, there's a property on Boston Grove Road, and that address is 1474 Boston Grove Road. The gentleman had to come before Mount Pleasant to ask for annexation, and often the question is asked, did the landowner request to go into Mount Pleasant? They're forced to ask to go into Mount Pleasant. This is not doing it under free will, this is under duress. And Mount Pleasant states, in what Ms. Luesta read, that you have to ask for Mount Pleasant Town Water Works to provide sewer. Is Mount Pleasant Water Works and the town Mount Pleasant one entity, or does the town Mount Pleasant own Mount Pleasant Water Works? If they're separate entities, why is Mount Pleasant and Mount Pleasant Water Works working together, colluding to force us to annex into the town? This is not just Hamlin, this is all the communities in the unincorporated area in the Mount Pleasant area. So we're asking that you go before Mount Pleasant and tell them, this is against your ordinance 2078, and we need your help to stop this forced annexation. The gentleman that was there for 1474, when they asked him the question, he said, "I was forced to come here and ask to annex into the town Mount Pleasant." Planning usually tells them, no, we're not going to accept it because they do not have an historic district, they did not put anything in place to follow the S3 in a historic district preservation where there's no moratorium. So my question is, we need to stop Mount Pleasant from this forced annexation for a tax base because they have not... All the residents, stop forced annexation without representation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will have our prayer by Chaplain Roy Gould, who's here tonight, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Chris Dubuch, who is the Deputy Director of Green Belt Program and currently in our Emerging Leaders Program.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give each council member wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the item before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation of God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act.
With the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted, and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item 2, minutes of the March 20th, April 3rd, and April 8th meeting is properly moved and seconded. Compliments to the clerk and her staff. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Thank you so much. Item 3.
Move 3A and B.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, so we have the Community Development Week Resolution and the Fair Housing Month Resolution at this time. Mr. Werman, our housing chair, will make those presentations, and we ask that our housing staff come.
Yes, sir. In, in the interest of time, we will only read the Community Development Week Resolution, and we will be showing a slideshow of activities that occurred during Community Development Week. A resolution of Charleston County Council, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since 1975 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and CDBG funds are used by thousands of neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has had a significant impact on our local economies through job creation, physical redevelopment, and improved local tax bases, and whereas Charleston County and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and public service needs, job creation and retention, and physical redevelopment, now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through 25th, 2025, as Community Development Week in Charleston County, and urges all citizens to join in recognizing the community development program of Charleston County and its importance to our community. Charleston County Council, Reverend Dr. Kyler Jerome Middleton, Chairman, April 29th, 2025.
Mr. Werman.
Well, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I know we just read the Community Block Grant Resolution. We've also got Fair Housing, both equally critical and important pieces of what we do here in Charleston County, and in many ways, sort of, you know, the first steps towards a lot of the housing efforts we've seen, but not just housing, a lot of other sort of critical community resources have, you know, been overseen and distributed, and a lot of good done, a lot of folks up here, and so we thank you all deeply. And with that, I don't know if Ms. Smalls, would you like to say a few words or present you with these resolutions?
Thank you. I first just wanted to thank council for recognizing the 50th anniversary of Community Development Week. You see some pictures last week, it was actually last week, but you see where these guys were out in the community doing the hard work, you approved housing preservation. We've got our guys out of working with housing preservation. All of the work that we do in the community, you always say such kind things to me, but today I wanted my staff to hear how much you appreciate the work that they do, because I don't do it alone, I could never do it alone, and I want to thank you guys for everything you've done to support me the last two years. It's been a rough ride, but it's been amazing, so I wanted council to know that. So, thank you.
Maybe if you'll form two rows, so that everybody can get in the picture, if you would, just form, form two rows.
Squish up.
Yeah, you have to come, come together.
Squish. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Smalls and staff. Item 4, third reading of the following ordinances. For A, Charleston Homes Phase 4, 1118 Carver Wood Lane.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1118 Carver Wood Lane totaling approximately .18 acres, parcel identification number 3510600194 to Narrow Gate Development. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes. For B, Charleston Homes Phase 4, 5317 Alvee Street. An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 5317 Alvee Street, totaling approximately .22 acres, parcel identification number 4080800282 to Carolina Dream Builders Incorporated. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
For D, Charleston Homes Phase 4, 3989 Paramount Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 3989 Paramount Drive totaling approximately 0.2 acres, parcel identification number 4101000030 to Caldwell Keiner LLC. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
For E, Charleston Homes Phase 4, 4828 Foxwood Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 4828 Foxwood Drive, totaling approximately 0.26 acres, parcel identification number 4040800212 to J&amp;W Construction and Design Company LLC. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
For E, Charleston Homes Phase 4, 4828 Foxwood Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 4828 Foxwood Drive, totaling approximately 0.26 acres, parcel identification number 4040800212 to J&amp;W Construction and Design Company LLC. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Item 5, committee recommendations.
Move 3A and B.
Second.
Properly moved.
Do we have a discussion on 5A?
Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Kabrowski.
Thank you. It's been a long night. I'll make it as brief as possible. Do we, I asked the staff, do we know what company the project legacy is? And second, what are the incentives? This is a public meeting, I think we should state it. What is the cost to the county that the tax money that we're giving up, and what is the cost-benefit analysis of this?
Mr. Pryor.
Mr. Kabrowski, I, I, I think you keep forgetting, when these projects come, they be revealed before third reading. And the reason that, why they hold these, is in case something happens, these folks don't want their name to be out there for, you know, if they decide to change their name. And so, I would hope that we understand that when these things come out, there's no way that they can give the name of these things until, up until third reading. This will be given you the third reading, it's no different than when you came here two years ago, sir. So, so please take that under advisement, so that way, it won't waste our time rather than staff time.
Well, thank you, but... I understand, I have the same objection now as when I did. I can't vote on something I don't know who they are, and I ask...
You can vote by third reading, sir.
And I ask, what are the incentives that we're giving, and we're picking, again, winners or losers, and small business people don't get these, and I want to know what the incentives are, and what the cost-benefit analysis. I think these are fair and reasonable questions that the public would want to know about giving up tax proceeds that other people have to pay. And I'm not trying to be disruptive, but I think those are legitimate questions that the public has a right to know.
Again, Mr. Kabrowski, the fee in lieu of tax terms include a 6% assessment rate with millage fixed at the 2023 level of 314.9 mils over the 20, over the 20-year term.
And how much would that give up in tax money? Is there a way to estimate that?
I made it in English, so I can't help you on that.
Is there anybody from the staff who knows that? Again, I know it's been a long night, but these are questions I think people would want to know.
Mr. Pryor.
And Mr. Kabrowski, I'm not talking about the incentives part, I'm talking about the naming part, okay? We cannot give out the names on these under the confidentiality agreement until third reading. Not incentives that they get, they get every incentive, that's up to the public to know? Yes, sir, I don't have a problem with that. But when you ask the question, the name, they cannot give the name until up to third, I mean, until third reading, sir.
So, you know, again, in the agreement, it was stated that the company operating under the codename Project Legacy is expanding its metal fabrication business to serve critical aerospace, automotive, and defense customers across the southeast. And so, that's the nature, you know, of the company, and I, I'm paying a little bit more attention myself, you know, to these that come, because again, sometimes we, in lock step, just go on and summarily, you know, kind of give these first reading, second reading, third reading, even when you know the name, we now see even in the, in the narrative, or in the project narrative, or the committee report, the, the scope of the business, you know, that defense piece, you know, can be very slippery now, that, you know, we're kind of looking at some of these other contractors that may, you know, you never know where these things go. But... Chairman. I, I almost concur with the vice chair that in some cases, and I, I've been here five years, I know we don't know, you know, the name of the company, I'm not asking for the name of the company, but I am a little bit more, paying a little bit more attention to this narrative piece.
Yes, and economic development gives us that if you request that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody.
Thank you. I, I don't have any problem laying it out, what the, I'd be interested to hear what Merle's got to say about this, but one thing I think that this council has got to remember is that this company is operating wherever they're doing, they hire, they employ how many ever people they hire, they're spending how much ever they're spending in property tax values and on capital expenditures.
14 new jobs.
If they don't do this, if we don't do this, the cost is, nothing changes. There's no expansion of the business, there's no new jobs, there's no new capital expenditures, there's no pay raises. So, it's not just a cost to the taxpayer, it's a cost of doing nothing.
Mm-hmm.
It's important. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Kabrowski.
Just briefly, there's thousands and thousands of spalt business people who would make the same argument for their own businesses, who we tax to the full extent, and I don't know how. We can tax some people and say, "We're not going to tax you, we're going to tax you." We all live by that, and if we were to just reduce our taxes on small business people, they would do the same argument that you're saying, sir. That's my argument, and I don't know if I got an answer to what the financial incentives amounted to, the, the money that we're giving up. Is it possible to answer that for the term of this? If it's not, I understand...
Over the next 20 years, annual property tax revenues to the various taxing entities from the expansion should approximate $1,203,933, with approximately 113,170 of that figure coming due to Charleston County.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. Salisbury.
I'm not sure that we voted on that item.
Oh, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay?
Nay.
Okay, I'll go with the nays, just for, you know, I have to do whatever Mr. Werman does.
Okay.
Please, sir, detole.
Yes, Mr. Darby.
Five to four. Werman, Middleton, Kabrowski, and Darby are voting against. So, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Charleston County and an entity currently known to the county as Project Legacy, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Project Legacy, providing for payment by Project Legacy of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters relating thereto.
All right, 5B. Moved, approved. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay?
Nay.
Okay, I'll go with the nays, just for, you know, I have to do whatever Mr. Werman does.
Okay.
Please, sir, detole.
Yes, Mr. Darby.
Five to four. Werman, Middleton, Kabrowski, and Darby are voting against. So, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Charleston County and an entity currently known to the county as Project Legacy, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Project Legacy, providing for payment by Project Legacy of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters relating thereto.
All right, 5B. Moved, approved. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Salisbury.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the Commissioners of Public Works of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, on portions of county properties identified as tax map parcel number 411130004, located at 4371 Headquarters Road, North Charleston, South Carolina, 29405.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval on 6A through 6H.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Salisbury.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the Commissioners
automotive, and defense customers across the southeast. And so that's the nature, you know, of the company. And I, I'm paying a little bit more attention myself, you know, to these that come because again, sometimes we in lockstep just go on and summarily, you know, kind of give these first reading, second reading, third reading, even when you know the name. We now see even in the, um, in the narrative or in the project narrative or the committee report, uh, the, the scope of the business, you know, that defense piece, you know, can be very slippery now. That, you know, we're kind of looking at some of these other, um, contractors that may, you know, you never know where these things go. But, um. Chairman?
I, I almost concur with the vice chair that, um, in some cases, and I, I've been here five years. I know we don't know, you know, the name of the company. I'm not asking for the name of the company, but I am a little bit more, um, paying a little bit more attention to this narrative piece.
And economic development gives us that if you request that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you. Um, I, I don't have any problem laying it out. What the, I'd be interested to hear what Merle's got to say about this. But one thing I think that this council has got to remember is that this company is operating wherever they're doing. They hire, they employ how many ever people they hire, uh, they're spending, how much ever they're spending in property tax values and on capital expenditures.
14 new jobs.
If they don't do this, if we don't do this, the cost is, nothing changes. There's no expansion of the business. There's no new jobs. There's no new capital expenditures. There's no pay raises. Uh, so it's not just a cost to the taxpayer. It's a cost of doing nothing.
Mm-hmm.
It's important. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Kabrowski.
Just briefly, there's thousands and thousands of spalt business people who would make the same argument for their own businesses, who we taxed to the full extent, and I don't know how. We can tax some people and say, we're not going to tax you. We're going to tax you. We all live by that. And if we were to reduce our taxes on small business people, they would do the same argument that you're saying, sir. That's my argument. And I don't know if I got an answer to what the financial incentives amount to, the, the money that we're giving up. Is it possible to answer that for the term of this? If it's not, I understand.
Over the next 20 years, annual property tax revenues to the various taxing entities from the expansion should approximate $1,203,933, with approximately 113,170 of that figure coming due to Charleston County.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. Salisbury?
Um, I'm not sure that we voted on that item.
Oh, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay?
Nay.
Okay. I'll go with the nays just for, you know, I have to do whatever Mr. Warman does.
Okay.
Please, sir, detotal.
Yes, Mr. Darby.
Five to four. Warman, Middleton, Kabrowski, and Darby are voting against. So, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Charleston County and an entity currently known to the county as Project Legacy, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates, whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Project Legacy, providing for payment by Project Legacy of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters relating thereto.
All right, five B? Moved approved. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? All right, Ms. Salisbury?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the Commissioners of Public Works of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, on portions of county properties identified as tax map parcel number 411130004, located at 4371 Headquarters Road, North Charleston, South Carolina 29405.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval on six A through six H.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? The ayes have it. We're going to do seven, uh, each item at a time. Seven A?
Yeah, move for approval.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Uh, seven B?
Move for approval.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Seven C?
Recommendation?
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Seven D?
This is the one that we, so let, so this is the program that enables, uh, staff to go and explore the application of, uh, making, this is a loan application, uh, $9 million, if I can remember properly. Um, again, based on the tools, the lack of funding tools that we have given them, um, they're trying to explore many different ways of providing funding to the initiatives, strategies, all those, uh, things in our housing, our future plan. This leverages HUD funds. Now, we could be bold as a council and just give them $9 million. And that way, they don't have to even make this, um, we could put it in the budget. We, I mean, we really can. It's not incredible to believe that we can't do that. But be, but in lieu of not having any pathway, this is something that they're contemplating, giving them the opportunity to go explore this loan opportunity. And then they would bring it back to council if they're going to make application. Um, if they make application at some point, if they're awarded, they bring it back to council. Everything always comes back to council. But it's a loan that has been leveraged over the life of the block grant, $3 million times three years, if I think I have that right. All right. Then we have a motion?
Moved approved. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, seven E?
Move for approval.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? The ayes have it. Seven F? Properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Seven G?
Move for committee recommendation.
Properly moved.
And I did speak to the mayor of the town of, of Lincolnville and, uh, earlier today, and, uh, requested that when they bring these things before us, you know, that they have some type of matching grant. And, uh, he said he would be willing to do that. But these 13 homes were some old homes that needed to be hooked up. And so, you know, we had a long conversation and he understands and he gets it. And so I'm moving approve this.
Okay, is there a second? Properly moved. This is seven G, Lincolnville Sewer Extension Project Request. They did have at some point, um, contemplated funding, but then because of the federal government.
Right. He told me about that.
Those funds went away.
Yeah. The sewer district was, uh, a partner, but because of federal funding, they lost that.
Clarification. Mr. Pryor, is this only for the 300 and something thousand dollars?
Whatever committee recommended, I think it was, how much did y'all recommend? Uh, 600? Uh, 300?
It was a 600,000 total, 500,000 for infrastructure, 100,000 for connections. Um, this yellow sheet basically just tells you that originally when we brought the request forward, it was contingent upon them getting the other money.
Okay.
Since they did not get the other money, we were obligated to let you all know. If that, if you want to advance it, it would remove that contingency and there will serve fewer people than was originally intended.
Okay. Properly moved.
Is this different than what we, I'm sorry?
Need a second if we're going to have conversation on this. Okay, properly moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Kabrowski.
But thank you. I didn't mean to be disruptive. I apologize. Is this a different than motion that we voted on last week?
The same motion.
Of what Mr. Pryor said?
It's no different. It's the committee recommendation from last week.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
I did, yeah, I just, I remain concerned about a precedent being set and it, um, it seems like we're, money flows all the time. I'm just concerned about precedent. So, um, I've got to be a no.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Could you raise your hand for the clerk?
One, two, three, four.
Five. I've got Moody, Boykin, Kabrowski, Honeycutt, Sass.
Okay. All right. Seven H?
For approval.
Properly moved, seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? So we do have some committee recommend, recommendations on item eight, but we're going to take them one at a time if we can.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I think I need some clarification back on seven G since that failed. I, I don't know what council's directive is to staff.
Ms. Salisbury, you had me down as a, as a, a yes or a aye?
Oh, no, sir. I thought your hand was up for a nay.
No, I'm sorry. No, I voted, I voted for it.
All right. You're, okay, so, so that passes now?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right, let's go to eight, and we're going to do these one at a time. Eight A, Botany Bay.
Proven. Second.
Committee recommendation, right?
Right.
All right, so that's properly moved and seconded. And, um, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Eight B, the Mount Pleasant Way.
Move for committee recommendation.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor. Yes.
Is this green belt money for eight B?
That's green belt money. Yes, sir. You were on the phone at the time, but we can talk about it again since you're physically present.
Well, I mean, if it's green belt dollars, and if green belt dollars, the purpose of the dollars are to preserve and conserve, why would we allow it in asphalt jungle to be paid for with green belt dollars, affecting minority communities? Majority communities, wherein the minority community doesn't really have a usage for it?
Maybe you can get one.
That would be a basic question for me.
Mr. Sass?
I wouldn't hear too.
No, that's a good question. Mr. Sass?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bless you.
The, the, the thought here is that this is a connecting series of sidewalks. It goes through many neighborhoods, services lots of schools, and it allows people to travel. And I travel that road, Rifle Range Road. Um, Mr. Kabrowski and I have been on that road for many, many years. There's, there's areas of it that don't have sidewalks, and there's kids riding their bikes and walking along the edge of the road, um, just like there is in all, lots of other places in Charleston County. It's not specific to that place. But this particular grant, what we're, what they're asking for, this is one of the things that goes in the green belt program. It's called a corridor. And we don't have many corridors. Corridors are like the West Ashley Greenway. Corridor, corridors are like certain paths that connect neighborhoods and things like that. And this is a path that is going to go, I can't remember the distance of it in Mount Pleasant, but it goes, it goes mostly up and down Rifle Range. This one is just Rifle Range Road. And it connects a large number of neighborhoods. There's, there's not people just riding bikes. There's people walking their dogs. There's, there's families walking. There's kids walking to school. There's, there's lots of people using sidewalks every day. And, and this is just to make things more accessible for people. And it's not, I know that there are, there are settlement communities along Rifle Range Road, but there are also other communities. It's not just settlement communities. There's other communities, um, along all the roads, along Highway 41, along highway, along Rifle Range Road. It is, it is a plan to make everything more connectable so people can walk to different places and they don't have to walk along the edge of the road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Then this is a type of oxymoron, because the purpose of green belt dollars are not to connect communities. It is to preserve and conserve. So I understand that. And then in reference to there are other communities in terms of settlement communities, no other communities have suffered as much as settlement communities. And for something like this to happen in a minority community, it's almost like pouring water on a drowning man. I mean, how much more can we stand? The, the minority communities lose out every time. And then it's making a way for others and it doesn't even serve to help the community that is, that is going through. So this, and those who wrote the, the grant whatsoever, again, it's not to connect dollars unless there's a periphery to that, uh, to the purpose of green belt dollars. I never read anything about connecting. I read about preserving and conserve. And with this, you're definitely not conserving particularly the minority community. How much more must they lose?
Mr. Boykin?
Uh, Mr. Darby, I promise you, I've got constituents in Salaga who would kill to have that sidewalk so that, in a nearest settlement community.
Well, again, there is a serious concern. I, I went out there and I'll call names. I spoke to Mr. Freeman, and I really felt this man pain. Community is dwindling and dwindling, getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And this is making the community smaller. I mean, I actually felt his pain, almost to the point of tears. I know how that feels. The community that I live in, you just spread Mongrave Avenue and just take people land. For what? Not for our benefit. It's for others. And then the others don't live in our community. So, uh, it's enough. But just the idea, people are going to vote what they're going to vote. But I just don't understand this oxymoron and the purpose of the green belt. This is asphalt jungle. This is not preserving property.
Mr. Warman, and then Mr. Sass?
Well, uh, Mr. Darby, you know, I respect everything you say, but I'm going to disagree with you on this one. Um, you know, I actually think that we frankly should be more creative with our green belt dollars on, you know, a variety of issues. And frankly, I think connectivity, particularly bikes, as opposed to, I mean, this is public right of way for the most part, and there are no takings. No one is going through an eminent domain process. And, you know, I, I think that that's been stated on multiple iterations of this project coming up. So, you know, rather than it becoming an asphalt road, which it could become, I, I think having it become, you know, a bike path, have connectivity that's, that's less intense in the long run, I think, is, um, an appropriate use of green belt funds. I, I under, for the entire county, for every community along the trail, trail.
That's going through, but those folks have.
I understand, I understand the sentiment, but I just, I, I, I can't, can't agree with you on this one.
Thank you, sir.
Sass?
Yes, sir. Ms. Wilson, um, one of the very first events I attended after I was elected was to be out at the Phillips Community when the sidewalk out there was dedicated to General Abraham at the Phillips, Phillips Community. And Charleston County did that, did that. We put a sidewalk through the Phillips Community. And so the people would not be having to walk along the edge of the road. That sidewalk's still there. People use it. I mean, sidewalks, if, if you're walking along the edge of the road and you don't have a sidewalk, you're in trouble. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pryor?
I wish they had these, this program during the 60s and Union hikes and Daniel Jenkins Project and Acapulco, and all that didn't have no sidewalks. Instead, some of them don't have no sidewalks. I just saw no concerns. But it's all, it almost seems to me as if we're trying to force people to get out of their cars and start walking and riding bicycles. We're using the green belts program now to, to say, okay, we want you to get out of your cars. We want you to connect to this community and connect to this one. I mean, you're not going to force people to get out of their cars. You can put all the sidewalks and the walking trees you want. You're not going to force people to get out of their cars. But it seems like to me, this is what we're using this program now as a weapon to force people to get out of their cars and walk more and exercise more. And, and, you know, the same folks who are for this, they want people to get out, but they're going to pass you by and blow the home while you're walking or riding a bicycle, and they're going to be in their cars. So, I, you know, I'm totally against going to these communities if they don't want it. I mean, if the community had said they wanted it, like the, you said you went to the Phillips Community because they wanted it. These people are saying, I don't want it. And we forcing them to take on something. And, you know, this is in the unincorporated area. This is not in the town of Mount Pleasant. And so to allow Mount Pleasant to come in the unincorporated area and just make havoc on our citizens that don't want it, we're not representing the citizens we, that we got elected to do in the unincorporated area. I love Mount Pleasant like everybody else, but I'm just saying if they don't want it, don't force these people to, to take on it. How many more can they take? Billy Swales Boulevard is going through. Hungry Neck is going through. Now you're coming with this. Mount Pleasant, wait, what's next? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kabrowski?
This is a very tough call for me, but, uh, disappoint some friends, but the, as I said before, I've been on this road for 46 years. I saw it from, from Coleman Boulevard out. It was very becalic. He had a, a canopy of trees for miles and miles. And, uh, you know, it's a dangerous road. There's all subdivisions out there now. There's many, there's two schools. My wife taught at one. And the children that go to the schools are from all the communities. And I think about the, I have six grandchildren and they live not far from there. And children will be going up to this school, walking and riding bikes. I feel from every community that lives there that has children will go to the schools there. And it's a matter for me of, of safety and also to try to make the, um, what was once a, a rural becalic road to, um, something that is congested. They didn't have the infrastructure. And this is a way to, uh, enhance the life of everybody there and safety. And I also, um, they, they said that nobody's land will be taken. There's no condemnation. If the people don't want it, um, they won't widen the sidewalks where they live, if I understood what they said. But I did, as Mr. Freeman pointed out, I don't know, he did bring a valid point. If, if they don't want it, the people are still going to go through there because they have to go through that, whether they widen it or not to get to the next area. So, um, I think it would be a, a positive change for the congestion we have East Cooper and the, um, the traffic and the safety of, I traverse that road probably, uh, several times a week. And I think this would make for a safer environment for more people or most people there. Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, real quickly, um, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm not voting for this, Mr. Darby, because I think it ought to be municipal project. But I would disagree with you. The, the West Ashley Bike Way, goes through Asheville, Maryville, uh, West Oak Forest, East Oak Forest, Stardmore. There's a waterfront park at the end of the West Ashley Bike Way. I said Greenway Bike Way is what I meant. Um, it's a great feature and the city could do more. There could be security light, blue lights. There could be call boxes. There could be things like that. Um, they could police it more. But it's a fantastic feature and everybody uses it. Feet all shapes, races, color, everybody uses it and they like it. Um, I, I don't know when it was put in place, if they wanted or didn't want it. I don't know that. But it's, it, it is a good feature, but I think it should be done on a municipal level.
Mr. Darby?
You so graciously summed up well, sir. And of course, you know, I always respect you and your intellect. But however, I don't think those communities put up a fight against it. Mr. Freeman community is fighting against it. There are some minority communities that have it. They didn't fight against it. Perhaps they want it, but this particular community doesn't want it. But, you know, after all these years, uh, um, as it always been, when the rich and the wealthy, majority communities don't want something, we rush to help them not to have things in their community. We, we just rushed to help them as in two or three months ago with the Medical Plaza, because those communities didn't want it. They fought against it. Now you got Mr. Freeman and his community fighting against something, and we not fighting to help him. But I sometime use, I don't know if it was a slogan or cliche, whatever the case may be. There's something called mine over. Because wealthy people don't mind, because minority communities don't matter. And that's what it's boiled down to. Yes, sir, I'm through. I'm, thank you, sir. Can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this adds, what is unique about this is it connects to Coleman Boulevard, which is the commercial district of the old village that would allow people from all the communities on Rifle Range Road to access in a way that, um, whatever community they're in, they'd have a safe way to access that without a car. I think that would be, because lived in that area for almost 50 years, I think, would provide a margin of enhancement of life to be able to access Coleman Boulevard. And again, to go to the public schools there, which the children that live in the settlement communities and everywhere else go to those schools and allow them to be able to ride their bike or access it safer.
All right.
Chairman, hold on. Let me say my final piece, sir. And I'll listen to what you say. Okay, I, I'm going to say this right here. I've never been vindictive. I've never been, ever been, been vindictive since I've been here. But I tell you this, never another wealthy community come here and say they don't want something. Let them come again. It's not fair.
All right. Uh, so in this case, again, the community, you know, we become the mayors and the council people for the individuals who live in the unincorporated area. Those individuals who are here tonight, I heard them get up here saying that they didn't want it. Individuals who are here, who, who are affected in that area, if you don't want it, if you would stand one more time, if you're still here, if you don't want it. That's all right. If you are here right now and you don't want it, that's what I'm asking, if you would stand. All right, so they, they, these are they.
Of the community.
These are the leaders of the community, including, uh, in solidarity, those folk from Snowden and, uh, from Phillips, et cetera. Just wanted to point that out, uh, again, you know.
One, one more thing real quick.
All right.
This puzzles me. So, we forced them to annex in to get clean water and sewer, but, you know, and nobody fights about, you know, some on this council that's, that, to prevent that from happening. But we turn around and then we fold sidewalks in their community that they don't want. They want water and sewer and they got, they get denied. They don't want sidewalks and it gets approved. You know, Mr. Kabrowski, I know you, you say you fight for the communities and you want what the small communities want. But, you know, you fight to save them, but this time you're not saving them. You're actually allowing something to happen to them that they don't want. But when they want water and sewer, they can't get it. So to me, it's, this should be easy and simple because we're the mayor and we're the, the, the town council of these folks.
Ms. Uh, Ms. Salisbury, I do apologize. I think we've exhausted the, um, debate on this one.
Okay.
Can I ask one mild question and response? I hate to say it, Mr. Kabrowski, but we're going to keep going, okay? Um, are we doing a roll call vote?
It's up to you.
Yes, a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
In this instance, the committee recommendation of.
Exhausted all of my roll call sheets tonight. Um, okay, here we go. Um, this is Mount Pleasant Way Council. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
The motion passes with five ayes and four nays.
All right, eight C?
Moved, approved.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Eight D?
Moved, approved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Eight E?
Wait a minute, eight D, I have a no.
Which, which one are we on, eight D?
Eight D.
Yes, sir.
We already voted on that one.
I got you.
Yeah, I have a no.
Cokeley Chapel?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Propusers nay?
Nay.
All right, eight F, housing are future planned priorities, and so as it relates to the top vote getters, well, not vote getters, but the two B, council, these that came up with higher numbers of council members reading them as a priority, two B, collaborate with municipal, municipal partners to align zoning and other land use regulations, five B as in boy, expand home repair resources for seniors and low income house owners, one B and three D as in dog, tied, provide capacity building and technical assistance, resource to nonprofit and emerging housing developers, and then continue to explore and support housing authority coordination. These are the recommendations that came from the rating aggregate from council members. What is your pleasure for this as it relates to staff?
Does this need a motion, or can we simply instruct staff that these are the new priorities that we focus on?
We can instruct staff. All right, yes, Mr. Werman?
I mean, I, I do have a question on this, because I think this exact situation happened last time where there was a tie for three and four, and I mean, we are talking about staff resources, you know, I think we'll probably be checking in with them on this, frankly, this would disadvantage one of my votes, but if I may ask, Mr. Rant, are y'all gonna be stretched too thin taking on four priorities, or should we, I mean, should we revert back to the, what we basically did the last time where we had a tie for three and four and just stuck with two, or, I'm happy to do as much as we can, so if y'all can take it on?
Well, I know the region, well, the three, the three D part, we are going, we've, we already have some activity on that, that we wish to engage council around the regional coordination of, you know, these housing, housing authorities, and so that may not necessarily, that's something that's going to happen, and so I don't know if that's.
Well, I, I'd like to hear from Mr. Rant about it, but yeah, I mean, I think that that's, that's pertinent information for sure, and I think, you know, over the course of the last two years, we were able to touch on a lot more than just the two, two we focused on, so if it's not, if it's not too much of an imposition to have four new goals, then, then I'm all for it, but yeah, just wanted to get some feedback on that.
Thanks, Mr. Werman, I think like everything in the plan, there are parts and pieces that we're working continuously, let me sit with staff and figure out perhaps what the next right steps are, and then as we develop that, bring that back, to include perhaps funding ideas for critical home repair and things like that.
Okay, well, based on that answer, I'm gonna say shoot for the moon, and if, if we can't, if, you know, if we run into problems, then, you know, we can always come back here.
Turn and adjust, yes.
Lead in, Mr. Werman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, because my, my concern would be, Mr. Rant, we've got two priorities here that have little stamp priorities, so we add two, three, or four more, and now you have six priorities?
Well, the.
Away, or we can, or we, we don't wanna drop them, we don't wanna drop what we've done.
Well, the other two continuing, so the, the, the trust is perpetuity, we've already identified that the sunset on the ATAX, that's gonna continue giving toward that, and then, so those are established and institutionalized now, so the stamp is, they will continue, you know, and staff will continue to monitor those. The land banking, the utilization, and, and so again, those were reports that we just got on Thursday, how well those programs are going, we, we even had actions that gave them permission to keep on doing other things, so those will continue going.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, it takes four years to get it up and running and started, and if you take your eye off the ball.
Yeah.
For two months, it goes to, so.
Well, that's when you have a quarterback.
Yeah, that's why I wanna make sure we're not overburdening her, that the, the two we've done such good work on don't fall by wayside trying to initiate new priorities.
And we have coaches, and we have coaches up here, and so again, there are, we have quarterly updates, we have housing, special housing committee meetings, we have more than enough engagement around these things that we will be able to assess it and progress monitor it from a council level, to see if it's moving forward, if it's stagnant, if it's sluggish, and then we can make adjustments if needed. All right, thank you so much. The Airbnb, HG?
Before we go to.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I made an error with eight D, sir, I was not apprised of that, is that, is that public access, sir, or private?
Eight D, that, again, it was stipulated that it is per the discretion of the land owner.
Ooh, well, if I voted in, in terms of yes, I need to change my vote, ma'am.
Yes, sir, I've got you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And I'm a nay on that, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
On eight G.
All right, properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Propusers nay, thank you so much. Eight H?
Move for.
We would have to do a budget ordinance amendment based on the moving of the funds from ATAX to council contingency. Properly moved and seconded, Ms., Ms. Clerk?
I didn't get who was the second on that item, I'm sorry, okay, Werman, I got, it was Mr. Werman.
The reading, first reading.
We need a vote.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Propusers nay, and first reading.
Yes, sir, and ordinance amending the Charleston County operation budget for fiscal year 2025.
All right, eight, aye, the Mark Clark Expressway contract unwinding.
Move for committee recommendation.
Which is?
That I had moved to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement as assessed in executive session with the understanding the agreement remains privileged until all parties execute.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Propusers nay, the ayes have it, thank you all very much, I know it's been a long night, and.
No comments tonight.
All right, so is it a common consent that, okay, Mr. Moody has a comment?
I'm gonna keep here now, just.
Mr. Moody?
Funny thing, I mean, who knew we had so many tree huggers up here, right? This was Choppin' Joe on John's Island two years ago, he's fighting like heck for these green belt projects, and they had all of us chopping down every tree in the county.
We weren't doing any chopping.
When we changed that BZA.
I don't know who was chopping them, but not us.
I think this, this group's done a nice job on, on green belt, we don't all always agree on it, but it's a lot of good stuff. Ms. Craig, can you send me y'all's schedule?
Me too.
Me too, I would like to.
Send it to all of us.
Yeah.
Send it to all of us.
Link to the audio of that meeting.
Yes.
Since we brought up that comment, I'd like to make a comment too then.
Mr. Moody?
I did wanna thank the lady that came up and spoke from Hamlin Beach, that was very encouraging about the, they were gonna take care of this thing, and I, I wish him nothing but the best, I just, I wanna make sure, though, Mr. Chairman, that we schedule this meeting about green belt funding as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Maybe with some staff recommendations about how we fix this incorporated bucket, because it's a problem.
We'll revisit it in our Wednesday meeting and, and have a timeline.
That'd be great, thank you very much, that's it.
All right, so my general consensus is that everyone does not want to speak, Mr. Kabrowski, and then we're gonna go home.
Okay, I mean, since the library board came up, I feel I should be allowed to speak too, I think we also heard tonight how people deal with diversity, Mr. Graham Horzeman is a religious conservative, there wasn't anybody like him, in my opinion, on the library board before, and we're seeing with how people deal with people whose opinions that, we see a little bit of what goes on in college campuses, to shut down the voices of people who you don't wanna hear. For us to say that religious conservatives don't make up a good part, it's not our entire population, but they deserve to have a place at the table and be heard, and we didn't hear anything from the people speaking tonight condemning Graham, when you heard an audio of a member of the library board making serious threats, I say we look into that, and say we're, that was made by a Democratic senator on the floor of the State House, and we, was that, I mean, it wasn't like somebody going to an opponent's meeting, it was the Democratic state senator said that a member of the library board made serious threats, and I asked us to look into that, asking the other thing, did that person make the threat, and is that making people unsafe to come there? I think we need to look into that, and before we start condemning people for speak out, let's remember, this was about, mainly about having an oath to the Constitution, and voices that, you know, not everybody agrees with everybody, if the thing is that people ask too many questions, of course, if you disagree with somebody, this is an attempt to shut down voices, shut down diversity on the library board, people who disagree, there hasn't been anybody representing religious conservatives, in my opinion, on the library board till now, and whether you agree with him or not, we should have all voices be heard, and it's an attempt to silence voices that haven't been heard till now, and to say that people would disagree if you are violent or, or somehow want censorship and shouldn't be allowed to be and serve on boards is the height of intolerance and the height of lack of diversity, diversity means hearing different opinions, even those you don't agree with.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, Madam Attorney?
Hello.
And Mr. Administrator, good night. I think we did a lot of good work. All right, so.